This is the roll call for the Alcohol and Zoning Public Hearing, December thirteenth, six P M. The Honorable Captain F. Rowell, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmen Lita Gums, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable J. C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Accountant Hor.
The Honorable Natasha Williams, I believe she stepped out. And the Honorable Linda Bakira Pritchett, District Seven. Mayor Pro Tem, we do have a quorum.
All right, good deal. First, uh, Rowell, did you have a question?
Well, I think the, to complete the roll call, we now have the Honorable Mayor Kalid present as well.
Hello, good evening, everyone, good evening. Welcome to our final meeting, our final regular meeting of the year. I know that we are packed in here right now, but beginning in January, we will be returning to the Southwest Art Center where we have ample seating and parking. There are a couple of young ladies on the wall, if there are any gentlemen in the room, or if there's any extra seats, if we could just make sure all our young ladies have a seat, because we're southern like that in South Fulton. I want to thank everyone who participated in our historic election this year. Not only did we return a U.S. Senator, yes, yes, but we finally filled a vacancy on our City Council with Councilwoman Elect, or Councilwoman now, Linda Pritchett. She was sworn in last night. Thank you for making us whole as a council. We have two meetings tonight. For those of you all who are unfamiliar with this process, this isn't how it normally goes, but we are going to hear the zoning cases at six o'clock, and then at seven, we're going to vote on them. I see a lot of people for one particular zoning case, so I'm going to ask if we can move that up to the top. The vote will happen at seven, and I'll ask that we can move that up to the top so we can get you young people out of here. And with that, we're going to go ahead and start. Thank you.
Mr. Clerk, please sound the first item.
I believe you have some amendments to the agenda, Mr. Mayor.
To the zoning? Yes.
Okay. Councilwoman Rowell.
For items four, five, and six, those are all change of ownership and per state law. It's prescriptive on that. In addition, we had these public hearings at our November fifteenth meeting, and so the zoning attorney is advised that we don't have to have second hearings.
Or four, five, and six.
Right, items four, five, and six, and my understanding is, on these particular items, he didn't receive any public comment.
So we won't have any confusion, Mayor. Do you mind announcing those?
Hold on one second. Yes, yes. So, items four, five, and six, items four, five, and six, if you are following on the agenda, it is page two of that agenda. It is the Cascade Shell alcohol license, the Roosevelt Chevron alcohol license, and the Shell Food Mart alcohol license. Those places all sell alcohol currently, and they have just changed ownership. So when there's a change of ownership, we just have to reissue the alcohol license. But, we do not need, is that correct, attorney, one of the attorneys, we don't need to do hearings for those three cases. All right? And so we will strike those from the record or remove them from the agenda. I'll, is there a second to remove them? Been properly moved and seconded? Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote to amend the agenda to remove items four, five, and six. Councilmember Rowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That motion was approved unanimously?
All right, any other additions, subtractions?
No.
All right, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I move to accept the agenda as amended.
Been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a roll call vote. Councilmember Rowell.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That motion was approved unanimously?
All right, Mr. Clerk, please go ahead and sound the first item, and Councilwoman, you want to make sure that you update your notice to the next meeting. Got it, perfect.
Yeah, we need to switch it over. Okay, you ready, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of council, we are on item number three, alcohol license rezoning, variance, and special use permit cases. This is for public hearing only. The first case is public hearing, Z twenty-two dash zero-zero-seven, request to rezone from AG one zoning district to R four zoning district to construct twenty-six single-family residential dwellings on twelve-point-six-zero acres of land. The subject property is located at twenty-two-ten Wallace Road and within the San Town overlay district, and is located in District One. Staff?
All right, Mr. Huff? I mean, Mr. Hull, I'm sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Before I begin my presentation, I just want to take a moment to wish everyone a happy holidays. I don't know if I will see you before the holidays, so I want to extend to you and to the members of the city of South Fulton, a happy holidays, enjoy time with your family and friends. With that, I will get into the first public hearing presentation tonight, Z twenty-two dash zero-zero-seven, twenty-two-ten Wallace Road is the address. As the clerk mentioned, this is a request to rezone from AG one to R four. By way of some background information, the department, the Community Development Department, received a request for rezoning for this particular parcel located in District One. There was an application that was initially submitted for AG one, changing from AG one to CUP. It was submitted back in September twenty-twenty. That case was Z twenty dash zero-zero-two. At some time after discussion with staff, that application was withdrawn in November of twenty-twenty. A request was resubmitted, and the Planning Commission held its first public hearing on the item August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-two. As it relates to the discussions that ensued at that particular Planning Commission meeting, this particular application was deferred by the Planning Commission, and at the November fourteenth Planning Commission meeting, I believe, it was recommended by the Planning Commission to approve the case and advance it to City Council. Again, this request before City Council is to consider a change in use from agriculture to R four. Initially, the applicant was proposing to change that to community unit plan, or as we call it here in South Fulton Cup, but that has since been revised by the applicant. The slide before you. The people on the Internet can't hear, so I just need to speak a little bit louder. So as it relates to the comprehensive plan, the twenty-twenty-one comprehensive plan, this particular parcel is located in a land use designation that we call suburban neighborhood. As you note on the screen, there are two classifications related to the actual land use categories, and those that correspond to this particular land use. Suburban one is the first, and the zoning districts that are consistent are R three, R three A, R four A, CUP, Community Unit Plan, NUP, Neighborhood Unit Plan, and SH, Senior Housing. The second group of zoning districts that are consistent with suburban neighborhood are R three, R three A, R four, R four A, R five, R five A, TR for town home, mixed for mixed use, NUP for neighborhood, Neighborhood Unit Plan. And so, based upon the applicant's request, which is again for R four, the zoning is consistent with the future land use map, and consistent with the comprehensive plan. This slide shows the illustration of not only the affected parcel, but the parcels in and around. You will notice that to the north of the project site, there are parcels that are designated within R three zoning district. To the east of the project site, and to the immediate or further east, there are designations of zoning that include R three and AG one. To the south is AG one for agriculture. There are also, there is also a designation of Community Unit Plan, or CUP, to the south. And then finally, to the west of the project site, the majority of the parcels are either zoned R three, with an immediate parcel being zoned as agriculture. So within the vicinity, there are a variety of different zoning districts that accommodate a different minimum lot size for the residential developments being constructed in the area. This map shows an aerial view of the project site. Again, you can see the areas that have been developed to the west, north, and to the south, the immediate areas. This slide shows the proposed site plan. By way of meetings that were conducted by the applicant, the site plan has been reduced to now consist of twenty-six units. The previous plan had, I think approximately thirty-four units, single-family units that were being proposed in this project site. As a part of what staff does related to looking at the project, we will always consider an analysis of the project, and so I will cover just some brief comments related to the project at this time. The applicant coordinated community meetings to address a series of concerns. These were concerns that came out, came about from the Planning Commission meeting in August of twenty-twenty-two. The R four zoning district, as was mentioned earlier, is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The minimum lot size for R four zoning district is nine thousand square feet. Three sides of the, of the current project site is currently zoned R three. Access to the project site is going to be off of Wallace Road. Staff has considered issues related to existing traffic demands and future traffic demands with the addition of these twenty-six units, and has conditioned the project to include a deceleration lane for Wallace Road. The applicant will also be required to install sidewalks along Wallace Road, the entire width of, the entire length of the project site. So based upon this analysis, and in consultation with the applicant, and considering the community comments and concerns, staff recommended approval, subject to the attached conditions. The Planning Commission supported staff's recommendation and recommended approval, subject to the attached conditions. And just for the benefit of Mayor and Council and the public, I will just briefly summarize the conditions for this particular project. Subject project shall be restricted to no more than twenty-six single-family dwellings. Site plan must be consistent with the conceptual plan that was submitted to staff. Units must all have a minimum two-car garage. HOA will, must be established to be responsible for sustainable maintenance of common areas and other conditions, covenants, and restriction regulations. The project is required to have a deceleration lane, deceleration lane on Wallace Road. The applicant is required to provide curb and gutter, and a five-foot sidewalk along the entire frontage along Wallace Road. Streets that are constructed for this particular project must meet city public street standards, and those are outlined in our code. And then finally, there is a requirement of a twenty-five-foot wide natural undisturbed buffer with a ten-foot improvement setback with decorative private fencing along Wallace Road. This concludes staff's presentation, and I am here to ask or answer any questions you may have, and I do believe the applicant is also present.
All right, we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing now. I'm going to ask all of those that are in favor of this development to please line up on my right, my left, your right, and all of those against to please line up on my left, my right, your left. And we have about ten minutes for each side, so please just be mindful of the time. Again, if you're against the project, you're going to be here. If you're for the project, you're going to be here.
Pay all the guy's money.
Got you. Um, or, do you have cards?
I, yeah, I do have some. I have four cards, five cards.
I'll tell you what, those, you all can remain seating, remain seated if standing up is a, is a challenge, you can remain seated. He is going to call out the cards in sets of three. So can we have the first, I guess the applicant first? And again, please be mindful of the time. You can see that there are several people who want to speak on this issue, so I would just ask, as a courtesy, we're going to try and hear as many people as possible, if you could keep your comments to about sixty seconds. You have two minutes, but you, if you can keep them to sixty seconds, that, that will allow more people to speak. Go ahead, applicant. You can have a little bit more than that, you're the applicant.
Okay. Well, good evening. I'd like to say good evening to, and acknowledge our mayor, thank you, and the city council members, I appreciate it. My name is Dorothy Crowley. My family and I are the owners of the Wallace Road, twenty-two-ten Wallace Road project. We have a presentation, so is there a queue to go?
You want a presentation? Okay.
And so we're here to just share the project, the information on the project, and just to share with the community. We, my family and I purchased the property. We came together and purchased that property, the twelve-point-six acres, and in purchasing that property, we went to the community to find out what we could do in the community that was going to benefit the community. We're going to be building our homes on the property, so we are stakeholders in the community, but we wanted to be able to offer an opportunity for the community as well to benefit from the property. So the Wallace Road, our mission is to build a sustainable luxury, single-family home and ranch, ranches community that caters to the active adults in the city of South Fulton. And that, that's the goal of our, of our project. So our, we have a team here that's going to share, you know, quickly and briefly, but our agent Natasha is going to speak to you about the actual homes.
So one of the objectives here is to ensure that we're bringing a high-end luxury product to the community. So everything in the home will represent a high-end luxury feel and presentation. From our quartz countertops, we will have options of not just vinyl plank, but hardwood flooring, built-in fiber, heated floors, sunrooms. Everything will have a very open concept kitchens. Everything will have a open and very modern, very, the designs will be on par with the luxury feel that is very current during this time, as we're looking to market these properties, and we're looking to bring high-end luxury to the city of South Fulton. And the builder that, that we'll be working with, he is definitely a high-end builder. Part of our team, our project manager is Dana Smith, who has worked within the city of South Fulton, is familiar with what the needs are. And our builder, Scott Zandini, he builds out in Buckhead, Brookhaven, Mary Etter, and he is now coming to the south side to bring his exceptional products here. So we're looking forward to bringing his products here to the city of South Fulton.
And as Mr. Hull said, you know, we began in two thousand, in the year of two thousand. We purchased a property in December of two thousand, two thousand, I mean, twenty-twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty, we purchased a property, and we engaged the community. We engaged the community on what they would like to see in the community. We had several meetings where we met with the HOAs, we met with the HOA president. We were introduced to the HOA president, Mr. Shepherd, when we first got started with the project, and he suggested that we look into a fifty, fifty-five and wiser community. We went to visit different fifty-five and wiser communities around the metro Atlanta and outskirts of the, of the city, Saran B being one, so we went around and we, we went to see what would be, you know, suitable and comparable to what's already in the community. So as we did that, we would, came back, and we got together a team. And our team, we got a professional team together to reach out to zoning, to find out what we needed to do to be able to bring this project into fruition. We met on several occasions with the community. The community had different concessions that they wanted us to meet, they had different concerns. Their major concerns was the COP, I mean, the CUP. The CUP, they had, had concerns about the CUP, they had concerns about the density, the number of units that we were proposing, they had concerns about traffic. We met with them on several occasions, made different concessions for those projects. I think we met about seven times in all, where we met with the community, we made revisions based on their suggestions. I think we met, we changed the CUP to an R four, we reduced the density down to twenty-six units, we changed with their, I think we even had public works to come in, they've started a traffic study to see if there would be impact by the development. So we've done everything, ninety percent of the things that they've asked for, we've made the concessions to do, because we are stakeholders in the community. My family and I are going to live in the community. So we want to make sure that, living in the community, we're a part of this community, we're stakeholders in the community, and we want to be happy with our neighbors. So all the things that we've done with the meetings is to make sure that they're comfortable with what we're bringing into the community. We are not coming in to, you know, to bring down the property value, as you noted, as our agent says, we're going to be bringing in high-end homes as well. We started out with thirty-two units was the initial proposal. We have gone to twenty-six units now. Next slide. The changes I said that we made, we, there was a big concern about, we first went in with duplex. We had no idea that duplex was a dirty word. So the word, it was changed. We have homes, we have, there are single-family homes for the community. There, we have individual homes, those individual homes, we, they had concerns about the square footage. The cottages for the scene, the fifty-five and wiser, we started out as twelve-hundred square feet. Now those homes are, with the rezoning, we're at twenty, two thousand to twenty-five-hundred square feet. The single-family homes, we started out with twenty-five-hundred square feet. We're at thirty-five to forty-five square feet for the individual single-family homes. So we made the concessions for what they were looking for. With the fifty, you know, the, the buffer, all of the homes along Wallace Road, there's eight homes along the Wallace Road, eight, around, along Wallace Road. So with those homes, those homes will be facing inward within the subdivision, and there'll be side driveways and garages, so that there will be no traffic of cars pulling in and out directly onto the highway, other than just that street that's going into the This is the plans, I think the same plans that Mr. Hull showed, these are the proposed site plans now, where we have the eight homes along Wallace Road. The single-family homes are facing inside the subdivision. This is the overlay of the community, where you can see, you know, where the property is located. Our project does meet the concessions. It meets all of the land use and overlays for city of South Fulton.
Yeah, just say next slide, so I'll know when they're advancing.
Oh, okay. They meet, they, we, we've met all of the guidelines for the, from the, from the public, the city zoning. So we have, we have some renditions of the cottages that will be in the community, and some of the homes. So you can, these are some of the cottages that they'll be able to choose from when, when the people decide to purchase. These are some of the single-family homes as well. We have our builder here, that's here, that can, you know, answer any questions that you all may have about the actual homes, and we appreciate you allowing us to build in your, in the city of South Fulton.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you tell us how much time is left on the clock for those in favor?
Two minutes and thirty-eight seconds.
All right, is there anyone, did the builder or anyone else want to?
Actually, I had three, at least three speakers that submitted comment, cards and support. Miss Stephanie Hudson, Vanjie Watkins, and Barbara Landfair. Yep, you have two minutes and thirty-eight seconds left amongst the three of you, so if you would use that as you.
Okay, thank you, City Council President, and, I'm sorry, Mayor. And my name's Stephanie Hudson, and I support this project because.
Miss Hudson, please also just state your address.
Two-four-five-five St. Paul Drive, I'm in Wind Creek Estates, I'm right around the corner off Enon Drive. If you can imagine going back to having a landline, if you could go back to not having internet, if you could go back to not having a city of South Fulton, but we are a city, a growing city, and with that city comes growth, and this project is a case study of a family utilizing real estate for generational wealth. They're going to live there, they're children, and they're inviting other seniors. Seniors need housing, downsizing, they're always downsizing and looking for better housing. This is a perfect project for that. And city of South Fulton was named the fastest-growing city in Georgia, number one. So we can't go back. If you do not accept this project, you send a message to other development that we're not, that development is not welcome here, but we have to keep growing. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, city of South Fulton. Vanjie Watkins, I live at one-eighteen Cotford Drive. I visited three of the developers' projects in three different cities, they're all absolutely gorgeous. I implore you, I beg you, please, just support this project, this would fit in so well with Wallace Drive and what is there now, and it's, it's outstanding. Thank you.
Good evening, I am Barbara Landfair, and I'm also at one-one-eight Cotford Drive, and yes, it is a little bit far from where you are, but I'm a Realtor in this area. I've been a Realtor now for over twelve years, and the growth that is taking place in the city of South Fulton, we have a shortage of houses. We cannot find enough housing, especially for our seniors, and we cannot find, as I'm bringing in clients, I'm taking them to the north side of town to look for housings of this caliber, because we don't have that to offer. I work with a lot of relocation clients, and they are not buying in our area, because they, they are not used to this kind of housing that we have to offer. The only thing that this project I see doing is bettering our community, not only adding additional housing, but also improving on the property value of current household and the owners that are in that community. It can only get better. And so I ask that you take a look at this project, we are, we're needing housing, and that's just not only in the city of South Fulton, it is needed everywhere, but we feel the hit when I have to take a client up to John's Creek or Apparata or. or some other place to look for a house because that's what they are used to. They're bringing cash money to our community, but they're not bringing it here to South Fulton. They are taking it somewhere else. Thank you.
All right, is that, was that everyone that was for?
That is all the cards that I received in support of the application. I do, for the record, I do want to note that we did receive three additional public comment, written comments that I submitted to you previously.
All right, thank you. All right, let's, let's hear the folks opposed.
So in terms of opposition, looks like we have a full house. But I did receive two notifications that these persons wanted to speak in opposition. That's Louise Talbert, Anthony Fulton, and Virgil Smith. I did receive those three public speakers. So if you would approach the microphone if you wish to make public comment. Collectively, you have 10 minutes and you may manage your time amongst yourselves.
They went over on the, on the, the support side, so we're going to give them 11 minutes. But if you're, if you're, if you are judicious with your time, we may have time to hear from other people. So go ahead.
Hello, everyone. My name is Louise Talbert.
Would you speak into the mic? Thank you so much.
My name is Louise Talbert and I speak in opposition to the Z22-007 zoning. And I have the voice to speak for the Wallace Road community. The Wallace Road community is in strong opposition to this R4 zoning, which is 2210 Wallace Road. All the subdivision that's on and off Wallace Road, the homeowners has signed a petition showing that they oppose to this zoning. I have emailed the mayor, the city councilman, everyone, a copy of that petition along with names and addresses. And we are here today with yellow tags showing that we oppose the zoning. We strongly oppose because the 26 homes that's going to be built on 12 acres of land is too many houses for such little amount of land. That kind of subdivision density is unwanted by our community and is not consistent with our subdivision. In the subdivision that I live in, and I've been living there for over 40 years, we have custom-built homes. We have homes that are at least two per acre, some are three per acre. And the most big subdivision like Wind Creek, Barrington Trace, Madison Trace. And we want to maintain the dignity of our community by putting houses that fit in with our lifestyle. Now, the subdivision density, someone mentioned, is 9,000 square feet. But there are other zoning that could be a higher density and there are some that have low density. We would like to have a low density because we see these houses are packed in on 12 acres. You can almost reach your hand out of the window and touch someone else's house. And that's, we do not want that kind of density in our community. We strongly oppose the building project because they want de-restricted subdivision. That means that they only want 55-plus individuals to purchase their homes. Now, a person that's 55-plus is going to purchase a $500,000 home, from what I hear. That person, age 55, going to purchase a $500,000 home. And if that home goes up for sale, that means they are waiting for another 55-plus individual to purchase that home. While they are waiting to do that, the house is vacant. And long as it's vacant, then it depreciate the value of our community. There are also no de-restricted houses in our area. There never have been any de-restricted houses there. So why now? Why put colleges? They call them colleges. They were called them duplexes. But now they call them colleges because we asked them not to use the CUP, which they were about to do until I passed a handout showing them what the county ordinance was. And then they changed it. Now they want R4. Why put that in the middle of an established neighborhood? A neighborhood that been there and they have nice homes. They're at a certain price. We moved there because we want peace and tranquility. Now, they want to put 26 lower standard homes in our community. So therefore, they are leaving out young professionals, young families who want to purchase homes because of de-restriction. Next thing I want to mention that we, we oppose the types of homes that will be built in this subdivision because we never seen the architecture plan. We'd never seen it. We asked for it. We haven't seen the actual picture. They took people to see their homes in Brookhaven, where horse players have million-dollar homes, showed us the picture. But we didn't see the outside of the homes. We didn't see how they were going to be placed on 9,000 square feet of land. We didn't see that. So we also asked them about the traffic concern that we have on Wallace Road. That has not been addressed as of today. We strongly oppose and we demand that the housing structure on our Wallace Road corner be consistent with what we have now. And we oppose because we have unanswered questions. We never had a meeting on the R4 zoning. We had them on CUP several, but never R4. A lot of people don't know what's going on with R4. So we want to know what's going on with the R4 zoning and the community has a right to know. Now, as your constituency, constituents, we are. The community, the community is depending on your voice to help us in this matter. And we ask that you vote no on this matter because we are trying to maintain our community. We want it to be a community where we could grow our children and maintain the establishment that we have. So I hope that you council members will listen to us and vote no on this so we can come up with another zoning, if possible, that everyone can live with. Because right now, we feel like no one is listening. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, guests, Ms. Crowley and her family. I've been very active and more-
State your name, please.
My state, my name is Anthony Fulton, Madison Trace. Phyllis Turner, Madison Trace, Vice President of the subdivision. I have somewhat been the voice for a lot of the seniors here because they have not had the ability or the opportunity to really express themselves in the manner in which they would like to. It's not that we are opposed to development. We are opposed to what is being presented. On various times in meetings, they have not had a quorum and they've taken votes and passed a vote without a quorum. That is unfair to us. That's one thing. The second thing is, in the last, what was that, the last meeting? What was that, something about the last meeting? Right. In the last committee meeting before bringing this to the council, some members of the committee voted for the property, for the project, which I have no problem with against because it's evident that something is going to be built there and it's evident it's going to be built by Ms. Crowley. She owns the property. But those that have vote, those that had taken the vote and indicated that they vote with stipulations, it is by right that they should have read down the stipulations before taking that vote. They voted without taking the stipulations. And that is not a fault of Ms. Crowley's or the members that are opposed to it. That is the council and the committee. For some reason, we're not following the Robert rules of order or the protocol within the city. And I think that's unfair to everyone in this room. Okay? For it or against it. Like I said, most of my constituents here and my, my members of the community, they are against it. And probably they are against it because they haven't been presented with the right stipulations or what we're trying to do or the stipulations in which I read off at the last meeting being addressed. Some of the things have been addressed and I want to thank Ms. Crowley for that. She upgraded the square footage on the, on the homes. She's trying to work with the density. But I think that 10 feet from that curve, from them houses with that fence, the way they speed up Wallace Road is not enough density. 100 feet or more should be there, including a sidewalk. That road right now, you can't walk up. And if you look up the design and the traffic that comes through there, which a profit, which a proper traffic study has not been done, we have major accidents. People are running and walking. Now they don't walk or run in their community because of these type of activities that are going on. If you look at the accident rate or if you put a speed trap on that road, you will see how much of a problem it is. You can't get out onto Hamilton Road after 4 o'clock because of the school people coming home. The traffic is horrible. Again, we are not propos, we are not opposed to the, to development. We are opposed to what is being presented and we are opposed to how the city of South Fulton and their protocol is handling this situation. It is unfair. And I'm not saying that Ms. Crowley did not go back and change some things and try to improve them. Yes, she has done that, but it's not enough. And I think that the council should take this opportunity right now and bring us that are opposed and us that are together and sit down and talk about this so it can work out for both sides of our community. We live there. We're not going anywhere. Okay? And another thing that the seniors are concerned about of their age when they use seniors, how can seniors afford 1,200, 1,200 square feet for a half a million dollars? When half of these people are going to the state of Georgia asking for assistance to help them pay their mortgage? So you can go ahead and continue from that point.
Good evening. My name is Phyllis Turner and I live at 715 James Madison Drive in Madison Trace. And just to, to continue this conversation, I'm, I'm happy to hear both sides. I'm thankful for you to say not your problem because some of the people who are voting in favor of this don't live in the neighborhood. So they don't have a dog in the fight. However, the issue has to be transparency. And like my neighbor said, Ms. Crowley, we commend you. I'm, I'm transparent. When I saw what was presented tonight, I was nodding my head because she did go back to address some of the things, many of the issues that we brought to her attention. However, we wouldn't be at this point if on August 24th, the meeting that took place that caused us to progress had been handled in the proper fashion. And when I stood up before the commissioners, I told them, you don't have a quorum here tonight. So how do we conduct this meeting and move this project forward when there's not a quorum? Yet that happened. Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, Madam Vice President, you are out of time.
I thought we had an extra minute. It just ran out.
Okay. I, I will give you, if you could just take 30 seconds to just wrap up, that would be great.
So in my 30 seconds, let me just say that we're concerned about equity here. We're not trying to oppose someone's future, but we're not trying to compromise our own future at the same time. And so I'll just leave it with that, equity and transparency. And as long, and the people who are living in this area look like us. So we're not trying to take anything away from each other. We want to live, grow, and build together. But the process has to be equitable and there has to be transparency. And people fear what they don't understand or what they know someone's trying to hide. And we just feel like we've not been given all the information.
Thank you.
Also, I would like for the council to go back and read the minutes of both of those meetings. And I would like also, so fairness, that this project be moved to the calendar of 2023 until y'all research that.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Fulton. You're out of time. You, you all are, you all are out of time. I'm going to go ahead and open the floor for council comments and questions. I understand that those against went over a little bit, but I, I am sure the applicant, they will have some questions of the applicant. So you'll get a chance to rebut in these questions. I'm going to start with the councilperson for this district, Dr. Rao. And I want to advise everyone, we are in these, we are in the 7:00 regular meeting, in 7:00 regular meeting queue. So if you would just move to the 7:00. We're using the queue, but we need to use the one for 7:00 now. Sorry, there, there's, there's a technical, there's a glitch with the 6:00. But go ahead, Dr. Rao.
A couple of quick questions and I guess these are probably a staff question. I think some of the comments I heard relative to what Mr. Fulton asks had to do with the planning commission because this is, of course, is the first time the city council has heard this case. Can, can you speak to that? And whether they're, with their recommendation, did it include the staff recommendations?
Sure, Councilmember Rao. As it relates to the presentation that I gave, this is the exact presentation that was presented to the planning commissioners. So typically, when staff makes a recommendation and we do the presentation, it is at the discretion of the planning commission to either approve, defer, deny. And in this case, if I am recalling when the vote actually took place, it was to support staff's recommendation subject to the attached conditions. And they don't necessarily enumerate them because they're on the screen. And staff covers them typically in their staff report.
Follow-up question. I know one of the things Ms. Talbert had asked me last was relative to the R3. I think Mr. Singletary had sent out, after we received the petition, opposition petition, he had sent out the staff recommendation because my understanding at the planning commission, they were referring to the original application and not aware that it had been amended. Can you speak specifically to, and I don't know if it's you or maybe, the response I got in reference to the density? Because one of the things I know questions were asked about were relative to how much, how many houses could go on an acre. And my understanding is, as currently proposed, it's 2.1 houses per acre. So it's, it's almost a half acre per house. Is that accurate?
That sounds about right. The way in which the density works, every zoning district residential has a minimum lot size that equates to the percent that would be for acres. I haven't looked at the requirements for R3. I can tell you that they will have a larger, they will have a larger minimum lot size. So whereas R4 is 9,000 square feet, R3 minimum, R3 would be larger than that. I'm going to have to look at the code to-
So just one more thing in my understanding. 9,000 is the minimum, right? When I heard back from the engineer, Ms. Crowley's engineer, these houses, they, they're not all at the minimum. Each lot size is different and they go up to actually a 54,000 square feet lot, which is, is bigger than the R3, correct?
Correct.
So my understanding was that as you go in any subdivision, you pick the lot based on where you want to live and they're not all equally the same. And that the reason the R4 was selected is because you wouldn't want to do a variation or modification on each lot?
I'm not quite sure in relation to the 54,000 square foot lot. That seems a bit excessive. What I can tell you is, if you notice and look back at the site plan, those houses that are being proposed along Wallace Road are on larger lots, which would be more consistent with the R3 zoning district. with the R3 zoning district. The lots tend to get smaller as you go into the interior of the project site. Is that correct?
Okay. Okay. And we also no longer have houses, any houses facing Wallace Road, is that correct?
Yes.
That's, okay. I'll defer. I'm sure my colleagues have additional questions.
Councilwoman Gumps?
So, um, yes, I have. I, I have a few questions. Um, so I see that the proposed price points, um, you have presented 700 for the single families and, um, 500 for cottages?
Yes, that's correct.
What kind of amenities will you be offering?
The amenities in the, will include, we will have a pavilion that will be there, walking trail, and a community garden that will be internal to the community.
Pavilion, walking trail?
And, um, a community garden.
Community garden, five feet.
Yeah.
For 700?
No, that, that's, the single family homes are in the, the 700 range, and the ranch style homes, which we are calling cottages because they are along the Mediterranean style homes.
Okay.
Um, they are starting around 500. So because we are targeting a high-end luxury clientele, um, that's why, because the amenities and the interior fixtures are all high-end. You're not, no, there'll be, uh, steel doors, um, quartz countertops is base. Um, the basic model is going to be a very luxurious feel.
Have you ever thought about, because, um, you're preparing a community for active adults, um, 55 and up, have you ever thought about maybe tennis courts, pickleball courts, or something of that nature to, I mean, that's the thing amongst seniors, um, and the high-end seniors. I don't know if that's something that you have considered for additional amenities, um, that will help sell these homes?
The property, the lot, the, the property doesn't allow for us, I mean, to bring in a tennis court and swimming pools and things of that nature. We brought in things that the community had spoke on, and they brought, we brought in things that would work in that community. So a tennis court, yes, I mean, it would be great, but because it's 12 acres, as they were saying, you know, we don't have the space to put in a total tennis court.
Which brings me to my next question. Have you ever considered maybe doing less houses?
Yeah, we did consider doing less houses.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Yes, we did consider doing less homes, and we brought it down. We were at, at a higher number. We were at 32 homes, and we're at 26 homes. So we did consider that and brought down the homes.
So, okay. Um, and one of the things, I, I do travel on Wallace Road, and, um, we do know the concerns that our community is, is growing. Um, and this is probably from Mr. Hall, uh, and I've talked to Councilwoman Rao about this, as mentioned. When we do, has a traffic study been completed for Wallace Road on this particular project?
There is a, there's a traffic study being done, uh, you know, as we've gone through. There is a traffic study being done. But when we, we are there, we're proposing 26 homes. 26 homes, 26 cars, 46 cars. It's the same as, to me, it's the same as people living in the community buying a new car, buying a car for their child, buying a car for another family member, adding it into the community. To have an additional home, another home with a car, I don't see a whole lot of difference in the, in me living in the community, buying another car for my child to drive in the community and, and add to the traffic.
So I totally, I totally understand that, but the community is asking for a traffic study. And one to be done would probably be beneficial. Um, that has been something that a lot of developers are kind of bypassing. We really need to see a traffic study. So if you are able to conduct one.
Well, there is a traffic study being done. I don't know if they, uh, if they've, uh, completed it yet, but it is one being done.
Is it being done by someone you hired?
No, it's being done by the city.
By Public Works, but that's what's the question I asked at the four o'clock.
Okay, okay. So, um, and that also leads me back to, wait, don't sit down, Mr. Hall, not yet. This is my buddy here. Um, infrastructure study, infrastructure capacity, is all of that included inside of that traffic study? Because you remember when I asked, when we go through this process of, um, our planning commissioner, our planning staff approving these type of developments, is the infrastructure considered? Sewer capacity, all of those things, is that considered, and is that included in the reports?
That would not be considered for a traffic study. There is a separate part of the application that we call the environmental impact study analysis, thank you, uh, EIA. And so those are some of the things that we consider as we're looking at the application at the initial stage. So we take into account, which is why Stafford recommended, uh, because there are no sidewalks in the area, that this project, should it be approved by council, will be mandated to install sidewalks along Wallace Road.
Okay.
But the project site.
But the infrastructure, sewer capacity, and all of that has been evaluated through an environmental study?
Correct.
Okay, that is my questions. Oh, what, I'm sorry. Um, my last question is to the developer, um, or the owner. Has there been any type of community benefits agreement, um, established with the community? I'm assuming that with the conditions that you all have stated or placed in the conditions, have y'all did a community benefits agree?
We addressed every item on that that was raised in the community meetings, but the, the R3 zoning. In fact, at our last meeting, the only issue that they identified was that they wanted to eliminate the cup and move towards single-family residence. So.
Which is what we did.
Right. Okay, all right, that concludes my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Reeves?
Thank you, Mayor, for recognizing me. Uh, I just want to be clear. Is this putting the cart before the horse? Is, is the traffic study is not complete, it is in process?
This isn't necessarily putting the cart before the horse, uh, councilmember. Um, there is a portion of our ordinance that talks about the requirement of particularly a traffic study. Um, and I was trying to find the section so I could provide it as part of this presentation. I still hasn't, I haven't come up with it yet. But it talks about when considering approvals or disapprovals, uh, this is something that, uh, should not be a determining factor in terms of how you decide on a project. Because the idea, and this comes kind of from Georgia planning law, is that as we engage in development in the state, there's an automatic assumption that there is going to be more traffic as we develop the state of Georgia, particularly in areas that are undeveloped. Um, and so there is a provision that talks specifically about this. But as it relates to this particular project, as was noted, the traffic study has not been complete. Um, and, um, there is, um, at some point, as it gets underway with Public Works, um, it will not just look at this project, but it'll look at all of the projects that are but Wallace Road.
Right. And, uh, one of the things is I doubled down about the traffic study because, uh, of the issue we're dealing with on Stacks Road, uh, from a warehouse, and then there's no ingress, egress areas, and then, uh, the bottleneck is waiting to happen. But I will say that, um, and they said the traffic study was done through Sages, and they said that was acceptable. But it takes an act of God to get speed bumps from communities who request them and have them, and we have the funding for it. And it's easier to get a development through without a traffic study that causes congestion and disruption to the quality of life, could, you know, we don't have to go to the pollution and things of that nature. But I think that we need to have a standard and a process to, whereas this comes first, because there's no sense in wasting the developer's time, or the people as well. So when it comes to this process, it's, it'll be an easy, you know, fix. If we can do that in this city, is that possible? I think you just spoke on it, but is this gonna be like possible to have this as a standard going here forward, and this serving as a blueprint model?
Right. I think the question becomes, and this could be a policy decision from the elected officials, but as it stands now, based upon the, um, units per acre, as is, as is determined, and in this case, it's 26 units, it is not a typical standard to have a traffic study for a project that has this few housing units. There are standards, and we have them outlined in our ordinance, where, based upon the intensity of the project, the use, that there are required standards. And, uh, there are projects in going on in districts one, two, and four, because they are 450, 399 and above units, will require not only a traffic study, but extensive environmental review related to the intensity of the use. But for a traffic study based upon the unit count that the developer is proposing, it's not necessarily mandated, because it's considered to be under the threshold.
Okay. So how many, uh, existing homes are we talking about in Wallace Road?
Existing. Uh, I would have to get that count. I don't have that count, um, for me, but related to the standards, this would fall below what our typical standards are for a traffic study.
Okay. And they're relatively the same size in square footage, the homes?
They are now.
I don't necessarily know the area that well, uh, Councilmember Rao.
I mean, I, I'd say now, with the revised plans, they are. The previous, uh, rendition was more in the size of the homes, I'd say, in woodside hills, but now they're, they're bigger based on the request from the community.
Okay. And if you recall, the.
The, the clarification, the houses now are 2,500 square feet and up.
Right.
2,000, yeah, 2,500 square feet.
So the infrastructure-wise, like, anyway, it'd be a tennis main tying into a tennis main? Okay.
Yeah. And, and again, just, just for clarification purposes, those houses that are but Wallace Road will be larger than the houses that are interior to the project. So from the Wallace Road perspective, you will not see necessarily a change in terms of size, because they will be same size. They may, they may be on smaller lots. They're not half-acre lots, they're minimum, uh, 9,000 square feet, but that's the minimum, uh, assuming that they have to also achieve the setback requirements for side, front, and rear yard.
Correct. And you have to come through Wallace Road to get to said property, correct?
Correct.
Is there any other way that they can have an ingress, egress without accessing Wallace Road?
No.
There's no, oh, okay. I was just asking. And so, okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Willis?
Is this your first development? Have you ever built anything anywhere else in the United States of America?
I have built nothing in the United States of America. My family and I acquired that property because we wanted to move into South Fulton. Didn't realize that I was going to be in the development role, so that's why I reached out to people who have had that experience in building, uh, all across the United States. So to answer your question, no, I personally have not.
So we're your test babies?
No, you're not my test babies. You're not, no, I wouldn't say that you're my test, you, we are, you're the test baby for this project, because our team has built. So you're, it's not, no, you're not.
Well, I say that because, um, let me just say this. Just because we're the fastest-growing city doesn't mean that we ignore our legacy residents. And that was something that was said tonight, and I felt like that was very disrespectful. Just because you have a right to do something, that doesn't mean you do it. And if this sets the precedence for how we do development, when you have three or four majority realtors coming here and, and speak for this, for this development, but then you have a room of over 100 residents saying they don't want it, you know, that's not the precedence I want to set. I, I'm sorry, and I just think it's disrespectful, and if this is the precedence, then we need to just tear it all up and throw it in the trash.
And I, and I do apologize for that, but we do have people that were not realtors that were speaking, but unfortunately, I took up most of the time during the presentation, but they were, and I think, um, they were even on the list of disapprovals, but they actually were.
So people can speak in the next segment under public comments. If you have not had an opportunity to speak because of the 10-minute time criteria, the next segment, segment, we have public comments, and everybody can speak. And I do hear you, I do see you, I did get the petition. I was at the library when the initial meeting was, uh, held, and the same, and these are the things that I heard, that there is a community trying to be built in a community that already exists. These are also the thing, I, I was told that people, this, these are the things I heard. People moved in this community because they wanted trans, they wanted peace, and, and they wanted, they wanted, they wanted less traffic. I have driven over there, I tried to see both sides of this. But when you have seniors that should be at home resting, and, you know, I, I see my grandmother, I see my great-grandmother, I see my mother looking at me, begging for us not to do this. Most of the residents are saying they want, they don't mind the development, but they don't like the density that's, that this development is bringing and the amount of homes that's coming to this. And I think it's real disrespectful to think that resident, seniors should pay $500,000 for some walking trails, for some, for, for a pavilion, and for a community garden. Seniors want to, I mean, I get blessed out every day because the pool is not open. We have active seniors. We have active seniors. And so, you know, I really would ask that you try to reconsider this, go back to the community of over 100 residents that are here. And my, my count, my colleague asked, how many homes are in the Wallace Road community? Well, it has to be over 100, 'cause look who's, look who's here. And I would ask that you go, because this is not what you would want. You won't, you don't want to come in a community that's already a community and build when you got all this opposition. And if it's gonna deter developers because we are saying no, and it's gonna, it's gonna make developers not come here because we stand with the community, well, I don't want you here anyway. Because some of these residents did fight for us to become a city. I knew Ms. Britton before I knew Councilmember Rao. She knew me before she knew Councilmember Rao. She was out there knocking on those doors as well, trying to convince people to be in this city instead of going to Atlanta. So, you know, we gotta respect, uh, this, this city was built out of self-determination, and this, and this city was built because residents wanted to protect what they already have. So I'm standing with the residents. And I'm just gonna be clear with you on that. I would, I would, I'm asking you if you could consider going back to the community and working with the community. I know you have already worked with the community, and I commend you for that. But when you have over 100 residents show up, and I'm getting emails, and these are not people who don't live on Wallace Road, these are people who live in the Wallace Road and own the Wallace Road area.
No, not all of them.
And I, and you know what? And the people and the, and the constituents who keep calling me the few, lying on me, blasting me because I don't want to approve this, keep doing it. I don't care. Because what I do care about is these 100 residents that came here tonight. In the cold. With yellow stickers saying, "We don't want this, we need you to continue to work with us." And they're not saying they don't want the property developed, they have never said that. They just said they don't want as many homes, and they, and, and the area is not conducive to the density and the traffic that it's going to bring. That's all I've heard. That's all I've heard.
Thank you, Councilwoman Willis. Councilman Sebastian.
Good evening, everyone. Our city, just like a lot of the country, is suffering from a diversity of housing stock. 500,000, it might appear to some as if it's a lot. But I have a development of just 23 homes that's happening in District 4. And before they even settled the paperwork, each one were going from 700,000 to 1.7 million. 18 of them were sold. So there's another development happening in District 4, which I'm hearing the same kind of price point for senior housing. Don't know why that is the market, but it is what it is. I did go across to Wallace Road. And just like Councilmember Reeves, I would like to see a couple of things in terms of, it may not qualify for DRI, but I think our staff can take a look at, just like we do for some local streets, and determine the level of traffic and impact that this development will have on the existing community. Yes, the residents are here in quite a bit of numbers. But you know what? We also have a city that a lot of people are moving to, and we have to cater for everybody. Hey, I moved from here, I moved here 16 years ago. You know, and there are people who still continue to come all the time. So yes, we love our legacy residents. I have a lot of them in District 4 that I cater to as well. But we also have to cater for new people who are coming to our community. The city of South Fulton has approximately the same square miles as the city of Boston. Yet the city of Boston has almost 800,000 people. Right? So as we go through this process, I think we still have some tweaking to do. The community is still saying, it's not that we don't want anything, but we still need to figure out exactly what is gonna happen. And I know it's been a difficult process. But one thing that was said here before is that I'm not sure you want to do something in a community where most people are unhappy. And so therefore, I would encourage you to go and, yeah, take another look at it again and see what you can do to make more people in this room happy. I'm willing to support diversifying the housing stock of our city. It's something that we have to do. Right? We cannot continue to say we want a lot of things here, but yet, oh, I'm gonna use the D-word, and yet not bring some density. But it's where it's located that's important. So if put in that much homes right there on Wallace Road is gonna create a problem both for the legacy residents, right? Maybe we take another look at that. But in some other areas, we're gonna have to be building townhomes and apartment buildings. That's just where our city is going. Because guess what? We're losing a lot of our young people, because they don't want to live in a four or five-bedroom homes with grass to cut. They don't want it. So if we're gonna cater for our future tax base as a city, we must continue to look at diversifying our housing stock. And I'm really looking forward for us taking a look at our comprehensive plan and our zoning plan next year, because I think that would also help us resolve some of these problems. So again, I would suggest to you to go back. I have one question for Mr. Hull. Is there a 10, is there a 25-foot buffer along Wallace Road? I think I read? Is there a buffer along Wallace Road?
I have to go back to the presentation.
Okay.
10 foot.
It's 10 feet?
Yes.
You know, I mean, even stuff like that, you may want to consider. Okay? So again-
It's 25 feet.
It's 25 feet? Okay.
Minimum 25 feet wide, natural undisturbed buffer with a 10-foot improvement setback with decorative private fencing along Wallace Road.
Yeah, so again, my recommendation is to go back, work with the community a little bit and tweak this. Right, and maybe we'll have a better shot at, you know, working with the community to get it approved. That's just my thoughts. Because again, I want to help you get through this process, but it feels like it's not quite ready. Okay? All right, thank you.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a technical question, and I'm not sure if this is a question for Mr. Hull or the city attorney or who exactly. I see that it's staff recommendation with conditions. I understand that it's Planning Committee agreed with the staff recommendations to approve with conditions. I assume that means that this project meets all of the legal requirements to be built. And so my question is, seeing all of the opposition and hearing all of the back and forth, if this project is not pulled by the developer for further vetting, and we have to vote on this tonight, do we have a legally defensible reason that will hold up in court to deny this project? Again, I'm not sure who needs to answer that question.
I wouldn't answer that in public at this moment.
Thank you. I just, yeah, I want to caution. That is how we ended up with a liquor store next to a daycare, because we ask these questions in public. So we should probably never ask questions about whether something is legally defensible on camera. I do just have a couple of quick questions. Ms. Crowley, I love the 55 and Wiser. I love that. Who is the builder?
The builder is Scott Zanetti.
I just wanted the name.
Oh, okay.
What is the name of the builder? It's just not on the documents.
The company's called Precision Development, Inc., and my name is Scott Zanetti.
Okay, Precision Development, Inc., thank you. And how wide are the streets, Mr. Hull? Are they 21 feet or 26 feet?
That's a developed question.
You need to ask Public Works.
The size will meet the standard for the city based upon, I have to go back to the site plan. I can't really tell from the site plan, so.
Do you know what the minimum, is the minimum now 21 or 26, Mr. Valasuela? And as he comes up, I ask that because I originally proposed changing the minimum size from 21 to 26, because at 21 feet, if anyone parks on either side of the road and an emergency vehicle can't get through. So if we're gonna have a 55 and Wiser community, I just want to make sure that the streets are wide enough that emergency vehicles can get through.
The typical standards are, you have for that area would be a minimum of 11 feet wide travel lanes. So you have 22 travel lanes plus curb and gutter. You have two feet, two feet grass strip plus five-foot sidewalks and two-foot backup out of the sidewalks. So you have 2.5, 7, 2.9, plus 2.11, 22. You have about 44 to, no, it's about 55 to 60 feet what you will need on that road. So you have enough space for proper sidewalks and construction easements.
Okay, I'm not sure that I understood that answer, but I just want to make the recommendation. I just want to make the recommendation like this, because these next few comments are not just about this development, but it's about a trend that I've seen in all of our developments. If I have a 700,000, I don't know, maybe I'll be different when I'm 55. That's only 10 years from now. But if I get a $700,000 house, I'm gonna throw parties. And I want to make sure that when people come to visit, because we've had this problem in many of our neighborhoods, that when people are parking in the street, our emergency vehicles cannot get through. So I think that we need to be really careful, especially in our 55 and Wiser communities, about making sure that the streets are wide enough so that if people are parking on the streets, no one, like we just never have that issue. The second one is, I was actually born on Skyview Drive. I don't know if Ms. Head is here, but she used to, there you are, hey, Ms. Head, she used to babysit me. And the topography of that area is not flat. So my second concern is that, and we don't have to answer the question tonight because we're way over time, but when we are flattening these areas and we are building detention ponds, we are creating issues for the future, right? We already got over 30-something detention ponds that like are not being maintained. If you look at some of these older houses in these older subdivisions, they don't build detention ponds, because they don't flatten the land, which also means that the neighborhoods that are built next door don't flood. We are having issues of flooding in neighborhoods across the city, because every time we build something, we flatten the land. And then lastly, no matter the price point, whether it is 100,000 or 1 million dollars, whether it is 20 homes or 200 homes, developers seem loath to build clubhouses and amenities. And we are a fast-growing city, and every time we allow developers to do that, we have to find spaces in Welcome All Park, we have to find spaces in Cliftondale. We have, this is a senior community, and we're out of space at the only place that we have senior services now. So we just got to think about community benefits agreements and making sure people are going to be coming in, building all of these homes, that they are helping us build out the infrastructure for our people, or else we'll just, it'll come out of your taxes. And that's it. Those are my comments. I will entertain a motion.
Well, we can't vote. This is a-
I'm sorry, you're right. It's already 7:00. I'm going to close with here.
I do want to provide some commentary, even though we can't take action. Hearing what I've heard today, you know, it goes without question, she's the landowner, and she's gonna develop on it. I would ask that we have one additional meeting to address this issue. Because a lot of people came here and they still do not, even their comments, they do not understand this project. I don't know if it means we need to look at the amenity areas. I know when I, and I attended the tour, it was about 15 people out of the community. You know, I looked at the homes that he built. He has a lot of many, some of those houses had swim apools. I remember the one in Marietta. I don't know if we get to larger lots with less amenities. I know we've had subdivisions that have been small, and we didn't impose that. So, you know, I don't know exactly what, but, you know, I want to make sure you have a, these are going to be your neighbors. So although, again, we can't vote in it, that's kind of the direction I'm moving. I just want to say that even though we can't act in this meeting.
Okay, two more cases, and then we'll be voting in about 45 minutes, so you all hang tight. Mr. Clerk, you want to sound the next item?
Yeah, next item is Item 2. It's a public hearing for Z22-DAD-014. Request to rezone from AG1 to M1, Lightning Industrial Zoning District, to construct approximately 491,000 square feet warehouse on five acres of land. The subject property is located along Campbell Drive, generally bounded by North Commerce Drive to the north, Washington Road to the east, Spring Street to the south, and Campbell Drive to the west. This project is located in District 3.
And Mr. Hull, if you could, just for the sake of time, if you could just give us your recommendation and anything that, you know, contributed to that recommendation. And if we have follow-up questions, we'll ask them.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Derek Hull reporting on behalf of the Community Development, Community Development Regulatory Affairs Department. I might, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, provide a bit more detail, because this staff recommendation is for denial. So by way of background information, this project is located, which is not unique to the city of South Fulton. It is located, it is proposed in both the jurisdictions of East Point and the city of South Fulton. The applicant is requesting to construct an industrial building that will be partially located in two cities. One of those cities is our city. The area is generally bounded by North Commerce Drive to the north, Washington Road to the east, Spring Street to the south, and Campbell Drive to the west. Currently, the area is undeveloped and heavily wooded. There was an application that was initially submitted in 2021, August 2021. That application was subsequently withdrawn. It was resubmitted this year. The applicant is proposing a building of approximately 250,920 square feet. It is a two-part building. One building is wholly located in the city of South Fulton, city of East Point. The other building is located between the two communities. As it relates to the future land use map, the future land use map, as is outlined in the 2021 Comprehensive Plan, identified this as an industrial zone land use designation. The current zoning makes it inconsistent, which is AG1. The applicant is proposing a change of zone to M1, as is indicated in this map. Now, if you notice, the star indicates the location of the property. Everything to the north and immediate west and south are not in the city of South Fulton. The area to the immediate east is located in the city of South Fulton. And as you can see, that also has a zoning designation of AG1. There are some additional zoning districts that are indicated, outlined on the zoning map as R3 and R3A to the immediate west. And then there are some additional zoning districts to the south that are also agriculture in R4. But by and large, this area is either zone AG1 or R3 in the city of South Fulton. This image shows the location of the current map. Notice the heavy vegetation in and around the area. This slide shows the actual site plan. So for your benefit, staff has drawn or staff is showing an illustration whereby the parcel or the property highlighted by this red box is in the city of South Fulton. The area to the immediate west and east are located in the city of East Point. Therein lies the challenge in trying to construct a building in two jurisdictions and not having consistent development standards to help facilitate the construction of the building. As a part of staff's analysis, we looked at several factors related to the project. As was mentioned, the property is primarily zoned in and around the city of South Fulton with either an agricultural zoning district or lower-density residential. That's the R3 zoning district. As we looked at this, we realized that this area serves as a buffer for the existing industrial uses in East Point to the existing residential uses in the city of South Fulton, irrespective as to the property designation. So the current vegetation serves as a buffer between industrial uses and those residential uses that are in our city. Further, as was indicated, the city, or the building, I'm sorry, is bifurcated, split between two municipalities. And this poses a series of issues as outlined by staff. How do we coordinate services when there is an emergency in the building? Do we determine where that emergency is, and then we call the appropriate cities' public services to service the building? How do we assess the property taxation if the building is in two locations? Who is responsible for liability if there is an incident to occur at the site? Who enforces the code regulations if there are issues related after the building is constructed? Because again, the building is proposed in two locations. Who has the right to permit the construction for the building? And then there are ultimately going to be conflicting development standards, because two jurisdictions typically will have their own set of development standards. So these issues, none of these issues have been resolved at the time that we presented this to the Planning Commission. East Point, by way of some additional background information, considered the adjacent locations and the building that is also located partially in the city of South Fulton at their Planning Commission and their City Council meeting in 2021, and they approved the rezoning. Now, from a legal perspective, I can- Now, from a legal perspective, I contend that any part of the building that is located in the city of South Fulton cannot, is not applicable to those change of zones because they are in our jurisdiction and not in the city of East Point. Therefore, after a consideration of all of these factors, going to the site, looking at the existing conditions related to the city of South Fulton, staff is recommending denial based upon the following reasons. Compatibility with the existing neighborhoods, and those are the neighborhoods in the city of South Fulton, and the city's desire to keep this area comprised of low residential densities. Alleviating the standalone zoning parcel in South Fulton, in the planning world we talk about and we try to prevent individuals from creating instances of spot zoning, where you take a single parcel and you give it a zoning designation that is not anything related to anything around it on the city of South Fulton side. And so in considering that factor, there are no M one zoning designations in the city of South Fulton in and around this area. And then finally, bifurcating the building between two or more municipalities creates unresolved issues, including property tax assessment, permitting for public services, liability enforcement, and conflicting development standards. The planning commission supported staff's recommendation of the denial based upon the items that were in number rated. And so staff is here for city council to consider this particular application before you. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Clerk, are there any speakers for or against?
I don't know if the applicant is here, yes, so applicant's here, I didn't receive any comments in support or opposition.
All right, thank you. Sir, you have ten minutes, but you don't have to use all ten.
I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Steve Rothman, my address, office address is twenty-eight forty-nine Paces Ferry Road, Atlanta, Georgia. I thank Mr. Hall for that description. I respectfully disagree with his recommendation, but a lot of what he described to you is appropriate and accurate, and so I'm not going to go over all of it. We're so far apart, but I've got this drawing that mirrored his. What I want to stress in this proposal, and the agenda item said we're building four hundred ninety-seven thousand square feet on this piece of property, that's the entire sixty acres, fifty-five or sixty-plus acres. This little square, which is about five acres, this is in South Fulton, so that big number is really in East Point. We're talking about seventy thousand square feet in the city of South Fulton. What's important to understand and what makes this unique, because believe me, I do this for a living and I know not to bring cavalierly an industrial zoning into city of South Fulton. You've got to have your ducks in a row. When we brought this in, what you've got is a piece of property that's in East Point, but all of this around here is South Fulton. But this juts into East Point, but South Fulton also has this piece jutting here. So it's an awkward shape, it's not like a square or rounded out. On three sides of this property, you've got something that's zoned to allow warehouses. It's under construction today. And I think what's important, whether you're a land use planner or a city council member, you heard Mr. Hall say, you've got zoning for residential in this area, that's your policy, you've got to stay compatible with the zoning that you have. I'm asking you not to ignore the real world. In the real world, we're surrounded on three sides by a warehouse zoning in East Point. And you don't have to pretend that East Point doesn't exist and pretend that all that matters is other locations of South Fulton. If you're going to, in my judgment, I submit to you, take into account the reality, because if this is AG one, that means you want a South Fulton resident to live here, surrounded on three sides by a warehouse. And if somebody came in and said, I want to put a warehouse next to AG one, you'd say, that's not compatible, that's, how dare you even ask that? That's disrespectful to ask to put a warehouse next to a home. Well, this is the reverse, we're asking you, this shouldn't be AG one anymore. This is contrary to your comp plan, policy that you adopted, that says that this area, this little piece here is industrial. And that makes a lot of sense because it's in reality surrounded by an industrial site. Now, we did hear during our process, well, what about trucks? It's a big problem in South Fulton. But the truth is, this project, it's got a Campbell Drive address, but as some of you may know, Campbell Drive is barricaded here. Fulton County, before the city was created, abandoned this portion of Campbell Drive. This piece is landlocked. The only way you can get to this is from North Commerce Drive, which is in the city of East Point, and y'all know it's the Camp Creek Business Center. The trucks, there's not even a driveway, there's not a sidewalk, there's no way to head into South Fulton from this warehouse. We don't need a traffic study because I can tell you now, zero traffic impact on South Fulton, because these trucks will come out here, North Commerce, Washington Road, y'all know it, take a left and you're on two eighty-five and about a hundred yards. So we respectfully disagree with Mr. Hall and his recommendation, because we think this is compatible with the surrounding property, the immediate abutting property, there's no negative impacts to South Fulton residents, because all of the traffic goes into the existing Camp Creek mark, or business center, and because the current zoning, AG one, if you just leave it there, you leave someone who can't drive up to their AG one use without driving through the Camp Creek Business Center to get there. This is one of those unique cases, it's on the corner of the city, the only way to get to it is through East Point, they're building the warehouses now. So we think this is, it's the, an exception to the idea that you don't grow industrial if you feel like you've got too much of it. This is filling, filling in a gap. And so we're just going to ask that you take that into account. In terms of the concerns about taxation, tax commissioner can figure it out, you've got a lot of properties that are split zoning or split jurisdictions, that's what I mean to say. I've permitted with South Fulton College Park buildings, this is down on Roosevelt Highway, half of it was in College Park, half of it was in South Fulton. This city council has approved intergovernmental agreements to deal with permitting, and if you don't, it's not a problem, we just have to comply with the building standards that y'all have. Taxation, you have that problem today. They assess the value of what you've got, and it comes to this city, and the portion that's in East Point goes to that city. With regard to things like nine-one-one calls, there's a lot of dumping that goes on on this property. In the past, there's been code violations on this property. You've got those issues today because it's vacant. There's an old school, actually, a school site there that's vacant. It's easy to dump if you can get around the barricades that blocks the road. You have those problems today. We submit that we won't fix all those problems because we can't change the boundaries, but what I would suggest is that with a landowner that's going to fence it in, you're going to have a lot less need for those kinds of calls. So with that, out of respect for your time, just respectfully ask that you consider this and support the rezoning. Thank you.
All right, there is no one in opposition. Just for the record, is there anyone that wishes to speak in support or opposition to this case? I did not receive any cards. In support or opposition?
Opposition.
Okay, please state your name, you have two minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Glenda Collins, and I live on Morning Creek Drive. I have lived in the area for thirty years, and I am in total opposition because of the environmental impact and the fact that we fought to become a city, and I feel as though at this time, we need to take time and use the land that we, that's in our city to our discretion, as opposed to trying to be forced to put another warehouse of property that's in the city of South Fulton. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have any comments from council, questions, comments? All right, hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
The next item on tonight's agenda is a public hearing, U twenty-two dash zero-zero-nine, request a special use permit to establish a new RV campground on twenty-one-point-eight-eight acres of land. This is located in District Four.
Mr. Hall?
Mr. Mayor, members of council and the general public, Derek Hall reporting on behalf of the Community Development and Regulatory Affairs Department. The item before city council is U twenty-two dash zero-zero-nine, located on Till Road in District Four. The request is to establish a special use permit to develop a RV recreational vehicle campground within a AG one zoning district. And the specific land area is twenty-two-point-eight-eight acres. Let me start off by providing just a bit of background. As it is outlined in our ordinance, a special use permit application is requested to develop a RV park and campground. The applicant has proposed to develop this into a two-hundred-space RV park and campground with some additional accessory buildings to accommodate the overall development. Our code has three sections that govern RV parks and campgrounds, and I will cover them a little bit later in the presentation. One thing to note for mayor and council and the public is that the main access road for this project is Till Road, which is considered a local street gravel road in District Four. This road has no road demarcations, so there is no curb and gutter, there are no lines to tell you to stay on your right side or wrong side. The width of the road is approximately eighteen feet, and the character of the area is rural, more specifically characterized by low-density residential development. The future land use map, as outlined in the comprehensive plan, identified this area as rural neighborhood. And I'll just take a brief moment to share with you what the intent of that is based upon our comprehensive plan. Intends to preserve the primary rural residential character of the city of South Fulton. The area represents a transition between agricultural and suburban neighborhood character areas. The rural neighborhood character area is characterized by low-to-medium-density residential houses with established single-family homes on large lots and newer traditional-style subdivision with larger lots. This character area intends to protect the existing natural features by conservation And by way of understanding the growth density, the intent and the vision was to have one to two units or less per acre. The zoning map shows you that the entire area to the north, south, east, and west is zoned agriculture. So again, this is consistent with the comprehensive plan land use designation. The site before you illustrates the proposed site plan by the applicant. So in this location, you have approximately two hundred spaces for RV parks. There is a secondary access that travels easterly from the project to the project area, but the main access is on Till Road. This illustration shows an aerial view of the project site. Again, you can see this dogleg extension from Cedar Grove Road, which is the secondary access point. The main point of access into the project site is along Till Road, and that's access off of Cascade Palmetto Highway. An additional aerial view of the project site, the vegetation, if you look at it today, may not be as lush because of the winter season we are about to enter. These are actual site photos along the proposed road. As you can see, the speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour. These site, these elevations or these images show the location from Till Road going to Cascade Palmetto Highway. Again, notice the gravel base road, which will be the primary access. Additional site photos of the site. Before we get into the analysis, it was important for staff to go back to the original application to see exactly what the applicant was requesting. And so as you can see from the RV park vision and intent, this is what was actually submitted by the applicant. So not only was the applicant looking to create a RV park, but also a campground, where it says, a secluded but easily accessible camping area tucked off the main road with full hookup RV sites. The vision includes a full-service RV park campground with water, electrical, septic for two hundred or less sites, a camp store, a swimming pool, walking trails, pet areas, game room, toilet and shower facilities, propane refill stations, garbage collection, playground, laundry facilities, and waste dump stations. So as you can see, the applicant intended for this to be an all-inclusive RV park and campground site. I won't go into the specifics of the developments, but as you can see from the slide, that there's an office building, there's a building for retail services, I mentioned the laundry building, there is an outdoor recreational area with play structures, there's an outdoor swimming pool, there is a small chapel of two thousand square feet, there is a mini storage and utility building ranging between eight hundred to fifteen hundred square feet, onsite wastewater disposal system, and additional ancillary buildings and structures. So taking this intent from the applicant and relating it to our ordinance, staff is providing city council with the following analysis. There is a section of our code that talks about recreational vehicles, in a couple of different sections of the code. There is a separate section that talks about RV parks and recreational and vacation camps, and this is subject to the approval of a special use permit. The specific development standards are outlined in section three-zero-two-point-three-zero, entitled recreational and vacation camps. As was mentioned earlier, the applicant is proposing two hundred RV parking spaces. From staff's perspective, such uses may contribute to unintended environmental impacts, including increased amounts of litter and pollutant runoff into the stream. So think of this project site as a two-part site. The majority of the site has approximately a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty spaces for RV spaces. There is a stream that the applicant is proposing to have road crossings across, and there is an additional thirty to forty spaces for additional parking sites. So because of this location of the stream, there is concern, given the intensity of the number of parking spaces, that there could be potential litter and runoff into the actual stream. The code, as it relates to section three-point-three-zero-two-point-three-oh, requires that if you are to do this type of development, you cannot have a curb cut on the local street. As was mentioned earlier, Till Road is a gravel road with no curb and gutter, and they're proposing to have this as the main point of ingress and egress into the project site. There are trash receptacles that are within two hundred feet, and that is a prohibition of the section of the ordinance. The site plan does not meet the buffer requirements as outlined in the code, and the applicant is proposing two septic tanks. The development standards for a recreational and vacation camp under this section of the code require that you have access to public sewer. That is not available in this area. Therefore, staff has considered the applicant's intent, has compared the development standards to what the applicant was requesting. to what the applicant was requesting, and recommended a denial of the project based upon the following factors. Planning Commission supported staff's recommendation and also supported a denial recommendation. The denial findings, and I will be quick in reading these, the project as proposed does not comply with the development standards as outlined in Section 302.30, which includes the curb cut from a local street, facilities must be served by a public sewer, a 100-foot wide buffer, and 10-foot improvement setbacks as required adjacent to residential zoning districts. Sanitary facilities and trash receptacles shall be located a minimum of 200 feet from any residential zoning district. Provides that the following chart of minimum distance separation between the nearest property line of the proposed lodge, retreat, or campground and the nearest property line of the campground with frontage on the same road as the proposed facility. This is information that wasn't provided by the applicant. Safety of the placement of the RV parking stalls and the site maneuvering, meaning that you've heard that there are approximately 200 spaces, the applicant was proposing that the users of the spaces back into the spaces. Between each space, there is approximately eight-foot buffer, landscape buffer. So just imagine if you're backing into a space and you have a 60-foot RV. It would be difficult to maneuver and create additional conflicts related to the flow of traffic. There were some incomplete engineering designs and site plans that were submitted. We discussed the environmental concerns related to the stream buffer. And finally, the project as proposed is inconsistent with the 2021 comp plan and the appropriateness of the area. So those were the findings that staff enumerated in our presentation to the planning commission, and the planning commission supported the denial based upon these five findings. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Hull. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Mr. Clerk, do we have any speakers for or against?
Members of mayor, we did not receive any comments in support or opposition to this case.
Thank you. Is the applicant available? Okay.
No.
Okay, is he not available? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and are there any questions or comments from council? All right, Councilman Sebastian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project obviously is in District Four. And I've heard a lot about this one on social media. I've gotten a lot of emails and texts and calls. But I really want the public to know that when a person owns a piece of land, they have a right to come forward and propose something. It doesn't mean council is bringing in an RV park or supporting or not supporting. It's the process that we're working with, and it's a legal one that we have to go through. Because folks are even onto the misconception that when the planning commission denies it, that it's dead. No, the final decision has to come before we on council. So I just want people to, yes, stay engaged, but come and ask, you know, the right questions, and we're more than happy as council to address these things with the general public. But, but don't get accusatory in your communication. Just come and have a civil conversation. And a good council member listens to what both sides have to say, you know, even as we weigh and make the decisions. And developers do not have to come and tell a council person they're bringing a development. They can go straight to staff and propose whatever they want, and we will find out about it sometimes, just like the general public does. Okay? So I just wanted to make those comments, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Last item on the agenda is item seven, discussion, legal and court reporter services for planning commission.
Okay, I think I actually pulled that from the, I actually pulled that from the agenda. I will just say briefly, we had a conversation with the, with the attorneys. We heard tonight some issues around the planning commission and the process. People had some concerns. I just want to make sure that the members of our planning commission are getting the adequate training that they need and that they, particularly around how to record the minutes of these planning commission meetings. All right, go ahead and sound, go.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Is the planning commission not getting minutes like we get?
Well, well, right now, there isn't a clerk that is taking the minutes. It's just a member of the planning commission that is taking the minutes. They also may, some members may have not had an orientation to planning and zoning, so just making sure that they have the technical assistance they need to conduct the meetings properly. But, but our attorneys are working on that, so we did pull, we pulled that item from discussion because they asked for some time to work on it and bring some recommendations.
Yeah, we got, we have several attorneys. It needs to be staffed by attorney. I'm just saying.
Councilwoman Pritchett?
So they don't have anyone that's taking minutes, but do they have someone that's acting in the capacity of like secretary?
Yes, they do.
Can the secretary take minutes?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification, Mayor. Actually, the secretary for the planning commission is a director of community development regulatory affairs. So we actually, my department actually takes the minutes. So we don't have a secretary for the planning commission. We only have a chair and vice chair. Those are the only elected, appoint, elected by the planning commission body of the commission. Everybody else are just commissioners.
So they currently are taking minutes?
Staff takes the minutes and provides them to the planning commission.
All right, thank you. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
That completes all items on tonight's agenda for the zoning public hearing.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the public hearing, the zoning public hearing meeting.
So move.
All right, I'm going to call the next meeting to order.
Let me carry the vote, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, roll call vote, Councilmember Morale.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
We are adjourned at 8:10 PM.
All right, I'm going to call the next meeting to order. Mr. Clerk, you want to call the vote, roll call?
Yes, this is the scheduled seven o'clock regular meeting of the City of South Fulton City Council. Roll call vote, roll call for tonight's meeting. The Honorable Catherine F. Rowell, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gomes, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Accountant.
The Honorable Natasha Williams, District Six.
Present.
And the Honorable Linda Becerra Pritchett, District Seven. And the Honorable Mayor Khalid.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
All right, please sound the first item.
First item is the, I don't see the chaplain. Oh, there she is, I'm sorry. Would you please come at this time and provide invocation? Pastor Barbara McKee.
Praise God, I'm still here. Our hearts has heard great, greatly tonight. Many items. So we're going to go before the Lord tonight. Lord, thank you for our mayor, the city council, and leaders at every level in our city. Give them grace. Bring truth, justice, and stability to our city. Give them power to do what is right and to rule in fairness. May our community be known for its justice. Lord, we give you our land, our homes, and all around. We ask that you give us favor in this area so that we may prosper and be a great city, and we will ask you this in your name. Amen.
We have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, and liberty.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is adoption of the council agenda. I do understand there are several additions to tonight's agenda, including the, I believe the city manager wishes to remove item 15 with regard to the Waste Pro contract for citywide residential sanitation services, and I believe there are some others that members will be offering.
I'll hear those now.
Yes, I would like to offer, I requested that we put a line item so we can vote on lifting the mask mandate because no one is actually wearing a mask, and so I don't want people to continue to violate the policy. So Mayor, you put a mandatory mask mandate in place, rightfully so, when the numbers were trending a little higher, but I think we need to go ahead and vote to remove that. And for those who are shaking their heads, no, I don't see a mask on your face, so. I'm not talking about you, Mayor, but I'm just, you know, I'm just throwing it out there. We need to put that on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor also have an addition?
Yes, Councilman Sebastian.
Wanted to add the resolution to approve some funding for our state champion Langston Hughes High School so we could give a celebration to them. It's one of those not more than X number of dollars resolution that we need to do a celebration with them in January. So I believe this is our last meeting before we may have to spend some money. I think the clerk has that resolution.
Yes, actually, each of you should have the draft resolution in your folders, but for the record, it's a resolution authorized in the city manager to allocate funding and/or in-kind services in partnering with the Fulton County School Board to celebrate the city of South Fulton's Langston Hughes High School winning the Georgia High School six-day state football championship and for other lawful purposes, and it will require a dollar figure to be placed in there as well.
Councilwoman Pritchett, thank you for using the cue. Do you have something?
Just for housekeeping purpose, the agenda, the agenda has been corrected on paper, but I would just ask that the agenda reflect District Seven, non-vacant, present.
Awesome. I see you. Dr. Rowe?
I think they, they've covered the items.
Wallace Road, do we want to move that up to after public comment?
You know what? What I want to do is defer it to January.
Okay, well. Look, can we, can we, how about this? Because people have been waiting, can we just move it up and then whatever decision we're going to make, we'll, we'll do it right after public comment? I mean, that's your decision, but if you want to make a motion and someone wants to second it.
What item is it? That's what I'm trying to look for, the number.
It is.
It is item number 21 on page four, I believe. Item 21.
Yeah, I, I do. I want, I do want to, of course, people can, but I can't provide public comment either.
No, they can.
No, because it's got to be to.
If they filled out a card, but right now, we just want to move it up.
Yeah, I, I do. I want to defer item 21 to January, to the January council, regularly scheduled council meeting.
Okay. Any other, any other items?
Yes, Mayor. So we need to move the, according to the city manager, clerk, and attorney, the item regarding the municipal lease is not supposed to be discussed publicly. It, we need to get an update in executive session.
All right.
So that needs to be pulled off, and it needs to go in executive session. And then one more thing was the sanitation needs to be pulled off.
Council, I mean, the city manager has already made that request.
Oh, we, you already made it?
Mr. Clerk, did you not note that was your first comment?
Yeah, I sounded it.
Okay, I didn't hear it. All right, thank you. So I move that we.
So you want me to?
Yeah.
Okay. So first item is requested by Councilmember Willis to add a vote regarding the rescension of the mask mandate. Number two is a resolution offered by Councilmember Sebastian and others to allocate funding for the Langston Hughes football team celebration. Thirdly, Councilmember Rowell wishes to defer the Wallace Road rezoning, item 21, to the January council meeting. And fourthly, Councilmember Willis wishes to remove the municipal court lease item from the agenda and have it discussed in executive session.
And there was one for sanitation?
That was the main one I said. Yeah, the first one was actually the removal of the war to Waste Pro. That was item 15, removal from the agenda.
Councilwoman Rowe?
I just realized on five, item five, number four, they say Hamilton Road. I wanted it to be cleared at that story Riverside in your packet just for consistency. These are commercial property parcels.
Thank you. And then lastly, did you want to make a motion to, did you want to include the removal of items 22 to 24, the alcohol licenses? Did we already vote on them?
No, we didn't.
We didn't have to vote, okay.
We just didn't have to have a hearing.
Okay. All right, do we have any discussion? All right, I, I do have just some quick discussion. I'm going to, I'm going to take these, well, I'm, I'm just going to take these as they, as they are coming to me now. I am looking at our agenda center, and I am seeing that we already repealed the mask mandate on April. It's our Resolution 22 dash 11. It was sponsored by you, Councilwoman Willis, and it was approved unanimously by council on April 26 to repeal the cities of South Fulton's face covering or mask mandates ordinance number 2021 dash 16.
Would you like me to read the email that came from the city attorney regarding this?
Yeah, I, I just, I was just asking, does, is that, did we not remove it with this ordinance? But go ahead, Mr. Attorney.
For clarity, that removed the requirements for the businesses, but it left the option for governmental facilities to still require masks, and so the city manager, in conjunction with Councilwoman Willis's request, wanted to just get a consensus as to not wear them in government facilities.
All right, thank you. And, and, and then lastly, I would, I know that we are not going to approve the contract tonight, but I do think that since our last meeting, there has been some concerns and some questions raised around the rollout, and if we have the experts in the room, I would like for them to have some time to address whatever questions or comments citizens have, right? We are going to, folks are going to be making assertions and assumptions about the rollout of the service, but while we have all of the experts in the room, if they just want to address publicly some of the deals that we've worked out to make sure that there are no disruptions in service, I think it would just be nice to get that on the record. But if the council does not want to entertain that, that bit of education, I, I do understand. Councilwoman Williams?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Typically, in a regular business setting, you don't have discussions of contracts that have not been finalized because contract negotiations are fluid. And during the negotiations in the back and forth, something that's been decided today, we could come back tomorrow, and it's not that thing. Having said that, I don't think that it is an act of wisdom to have a open public discussion about something that is in flux because we could very well have people give answers that are correct today, but when people get to negotiating tomorrow, they're no longer correct. This is one of the reasons why you don't do open public discussions about legal, financial, and contractual matters until they have been settled and you can roll out a finalized compreh- and contractual matters until they have been settled and you can roll out a finalized, comprehensive plan. And I would submit that part of the confusion and chaos, if not all of it, that is happening in the public is happening because people are insisting on putting out information that has not been finalized, that has not been inked, and leading people to believe that things are ways that they perhaps are not. So I would strongly urge us, once again, to proceed wisely and to follow prescribed processes for negotiating contracts and to stop trying to have open, public discussions about matters that are not settled.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sebastian?
Just wanted to add that a large part of the program is going to entail an education piece, you know, both from staff and from council members. So there's really a lot of time that's left. Plus, I think some of us have been publishing newsletters and things about, you know, things being dropped and why and so on. So, but in terms of what Councilmember Williams said, in terms of trying to keep down some of this chatter because it's still a legal process and the negotiations still happening, I fully support that. But just know that from the onset, we've always said there's going to be a heavy educational component. We just don't want to be premature in doing, in having those conversations, in my view. Thank you.
Councilwoman Willis?
Thank you, Councilmember Williams. And I just also want to add that executive session is for us to discuss real estate, personnel, and litigation. And the information that was divulged publicly to the community Sunday may have quite been a violation because the city manager sent an email that people can do open records requests for advising this council and advising the chair, you, Mayor, that she wanted to discuss all options with this council under real estate in executive session. So to go out and sort of put information out favoring one option over others, it hampers the negotiation, it hampers the, the confidentiality, and it hampers our decision on what we legally should vote on or feel comfortable voting on because the transaction wasn't handled properly, which should be in executive session under real estate. And so I just would appreciate that the community, I just would appreciate that the correct information and the legal information is released when it's supposed to be released and the community stopped being gaslighted with misinformation. I've been talking to my community, I answer my phone calls, they get my emails, and majority of them are not here tonight, like Wallace Road was, because they know what's going on. Thank you.
Councilwoman Pritchett?
I'd like to indicate that on line item twenty-four, that this location is actually not in District Four, it is in District Seven.
That's correct.
Item twenty-four is not located in District Four, it's in District Seven.
We should have made that correction from last time.
From last time.
Is that it? All right. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a motion to approve the agenda as amended. We actually need a motion and a second to approve it as amended.
Oh, okay. I thought we had that. Go ahead.
Make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been properly motioned and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That motion was approved unanimously as amended.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is approval of city council meeting minutes, the regular meeting minutes from November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, work session minutes from November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and alcohol zoning public hearing minutes from November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two.
I move to approve the city council regular meetings from November fifteenth and the work session minutes from November fifteenth and alcohol zoning public hearing meetings from November fifteenth.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
And I don't want to prove unanimously.
All right, please sound the next item.
Next item is the consent agenda. You have mayor council proclamations for spreading on the minutes, confirmation of development plots, approval of resolution authorizing the sale of the police K-9 Frankie to his handler, request council approval to purchase fifteen non-smoke appliances for fire apparatus, request council approval into an, in a government agreement with Fulton Industrial Community Improvement District to enter to an agreement to set forth the rights and responsibilities of each party during the preliminary engineering phase of the streetscape enhancement project that includes sidewalks on both sides of SR seventy Fulton Industrial Boulevard, between Lakeview Court and West Place, West Park Place, and intersection improvements at SR seventy CR forty-one seventy and Cascade Road. These projects are funded through a grant through A R C in the amount of two hundred eighty thousand for P E services. Request council approval for resolution approving the city manager's emergency procurement for professional adult probation service supervision and rehabilitation services for the city of South Fulton Municipal Court. That completes the consent agenda items.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing on, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rowe.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item was approved unanimously.
All right, please sound the next item.
Next item is proclamation presentations, proclamation presentation recognizing former city of South Fulton Deputy Police Chief and now City of College Park Police Chief Connie Rogers. This is sponsored by the full council.
She is here.
Chief Rogers, please come forward.
I'm a phone call away. Put it out there for that. I ain't got nothing for the list.
Have we, have we got everybody? Look, we, it's Christmas, okay? I came dressed for Christmas. Everybody knows she's my Sarah. Obviously, this is Chief Rogers, a bittersweet moment for all of us because you're very much loved and you have served the city of South Fulton exceptionally well in your time here. And while we hate to see you go, we know that you have been elevated to a higher position that is so well deserved. And we just wanted to take a moment to appreciate you, to celebrate you. We know that you're just down the road. If I come speeding down Godby Road, cut me some slack. I will not read the full proclamation because it's a lot of words and we are hour and a half almost over time. But whereas Chief Connie Rogers has demonstrated a strong commitment to law enforcement and excelled at every jurisdiction she has served with, and whereas Chief Rogers began her law enforcement career in the military and upon honorable, honorable, I can talk, discharge, began working for the Cobb County Sheriff's Office, Chief Rogers held a plethora of positions in the sheriff's office, including serving at the jail, court, and warrant division, and as a domestic violence investigator. And whereas Chief Rogers transitioned to the city of College Park Police Department in twenty-eleven and rose through the ranks serving as a patrol officer, investigator, detective sergeant lieutenant, Chief Rogers' excellent leadership skills afforded her promotions to command positions, including criminal investigations, division commander, patrol watch commander, and officer of professional standards with included background in recruiting, training, internal affairs, federal grants management, and uniform patrol division. And whereas Chief Rogers joined the city of South Fulton Police Department in twenty-eighteen as deputy chief of police and served honorably for four years. While at the city of South Fulton, Chief Rogers led the young department's organization, specifically focusing her efforts on background and recruitment, where she put specific guidelines in place. As a result, the department hired forty-six new police officers in the first year. And whereas Chief Rogers is a member of numerous professional organizations, including the International Association of Chiefs of Police, the Georgia Association of Chiefs of Police, the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, the National Association of Women Law Enforcement Executives, the Georgia Association of Women in Public Safety, and what most importantly, Chief Rogers is also a proud member of Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Incorporated, a community conscious, action-oriented organization. And whereas the city of South Fulton is honored to celebrate Chief Rogers' twenty-three-plus years of law enforcement service and expresses extreme gratitude to her and her family, which includes her son, Gideon. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the city of South Fulton congratulates Chief, and my Sarah, Rogers for her many years of service, commitment to the citizens, and her demonstration of excellence in policing and does hereby proclaim Tuesday, December thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two, as Chief Connie Rogers Appreciation Day in the city of South Fulton.
Thank you, y'all. Thank you. I am extremely humbled by the recognition. The last four years have been great. It's not goodbye, I'm right down the road. And I thank you all so much for all of your support that you've given over the last four years. And I'm only a phone call away. Like I told Chief at my, my swearing-in ceremony, him and I are going to debate now who's the best chief on the side of two eighty-five, eighty-five. I love y'all and thank y'all.
So when I first came over as the chief of police here in South Fulton, I brought a handful of people with me. And one of the reasons that I brought Connie with me was because, and I say this all the time, you know, many chiefs have a lot of people around them. And quite often, those people are telling you yes to everything. Well, Connie was one of those few people that said, no, chief, we're not going to do that, and this is why. Well, see, you want people around you to tell you what you need to know, and you need to have differing opinions on different things because everything can't start and stop with Keith Meadows, right? And so when I brought Connie over, I said, I want you to be my deputy chief. And we went through a lot of different things to make this police department get to where it is today. But I tell you, there was one thing that made me realize that Connie was ready for this position. We had a situation when we were both in College Park together where the Department of Human Resources was in disarray. I mean, they had employees out there, there was always fights going on every day. And I told the city manager at that time, I said, let me give you Connie for a period of time to serve as the interim H R director. And she did that for almost a year. She served as the interim H R director for almost a year there. And when I tell you she straightened out that department, I was really proud of her because not only did she get the opportunity to get some leadership skills, she served as, as a department head for that period of time. And so that told me in that instance that she was ready. And I told her when she came over here that if she was still not a police chief four years from now, that I would be extremely disappointed. Here we are four years later, and you're a chief of police in College Park, and I'm so proud of you, Connie. I really am. You done?
You want to take another picture?
Oh, we had the lady.
Council.
Council.
I saw ladies there, ladies there.
Are we on a research?
I think you know, they think outside you too, okay.
I know.
I wish her night by success.
Hey, man, I got a O with me, that's it.
Because I think she, I think that she, she behaved, she behaved everything on her lips.
Are we, are we, are we, are we on a, are we on a break? We on a break?
Well, uh, nah. Just keep, oh, they left. Oh. We can't even vote. We can't even, we don't have enough to even vote. Oh, we got a corner. We got a corner. Where are we on agenda, though? Public comment?
I can't eat no more junk food, man.
We're a public comment. You want to take a quick break?
Do you have a lot of comment cards?
I haven't gotten any, except Miss Gilliard's online.
Well, let her do hers. Let's do hers, we only got one. He says only one Gilliard. Well, yeah, then at least we can come back in. These other ones honestly shouldn't eat.
Y'all messing with my blood, you know?
All right, let's call me back, boy, that's the weekend.
Mayor Pro Tim, come on, let's go.
Yes, Mr. Clerk, sound the next item.
Public comment.
This is Mayor Pro Tim and members of council. We are at the public comment section of the meeting.
All right, we have public comments. Do we have?
I've actually only received one speaker card for Mrs. Gilliard, who wishes to speak. I did not receive any written speaker cards for tonight.
Okay, is, uh, Ms. Gilliard here?
Ms. Gilliard is present via Zoom, and, uh, Ms. Gilliard, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, please state your name, your address, and you have two minutes to make your public comment.
Yes. My name is Naemia Gilliard. Uh...
We can't even vote. We can't, we don't have enough to even vote. Oh, we got a corner, we got a corner. Where are we on agenda though? Public comment?
I can't eat no more junk food, man.
We're a public comment, you wanna take a quick break?
Do you have a lot of comment cards?
I haven't gotten any, except Ms. Gilliard's online.
Well let her do hers, let's do hers, we only got one. Yeah, then at least we can come back in. These other ones honestly shouldn't eat.
Y'all messing with my blood sugar now.
Mayor Protem, come on, let's go.
Yes, Mr. Clerk, sound next to him.
This is Mayor Protem and members of council, we are at the public comment section of the meeting.
All right, we have public comments.
I've actually only received one speaker card for Mrs. Gilliard who wishes to speak. I did not receive any written speaker cards for tonight.
Okay, is Ms. Gilliard here?
Ms. Gilliard is present via Zoom, and Ms. Gilliard, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, please state your name, your address, and you have two minutes to make your public comment.
My name is Naemia Gilliard, I live in District Four. My address is five-two-four Gray Hart Way.
Yes, Ms. Gill, in your comments, you commented on several items on the agenda. Just please reference those items as you make your comment, please.
Okay, I will. Wallace Road, I support the citizens who said no for this project. I support the citizen who said no for the warehouse that would be close to residential. It would be the first in the city. Is something wrong with the audio? Because it's being delayed or something, I don't know. But anyway, CDRA, CDRA, the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission and residents in District Four say no to the RV for numerous reasons, particularly density. And it appears that the city has not followed the standards and procedures for the continuation of the Georgia Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Act as it relates to sanitation. Did, oh boy. I did hear from my vendor today after three or four attempts, and they will provide service after December thirty-first. That was a real big concern that I have. They will, they will collect, but I do have a serious problem about Fulton County collecting and charging fees to do so, which is gonna be huge, especially the ability to foreclose on property.
Madam Gilliard, we have to stick with that, it's on the agenda. Thank you. Thank you, thank you for your comments.
Everything I said was on the agenda.
We removed the sanitation, ma'am. Thank you so much for your comments, Madam Gilliard, we appreciate it.
I didn't know that.
Yes, Mr. Clerk, are we at the next part of council comments?
Yes, sir.
All right, and going with the mayor's request from the last meeting, we're going to start a reverse order. So we're actually gonna start from our newest member, District Seven. Which, she's on intermission break, so go ahead with District Six.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On December the twentieth, keep, keep me honest, Captain Tooks, on December the twentieth, we will be having a Holiday Coffee with a Cop at Heritage Park Clubhouse. We have Santa, we have food, we have drinks, we have toys, we have lots of good interaction for the community, particularly for the kids. So please do come out on December the twentieth to the Holiday Coffee with a Cop, and get your picture taken with Santa. And, you know, begin the process of coasting into Christmas with a cookie and a cup of coffee.
Councilwoman Pritchett? Oh, okay, thank you. Mayor Protem Reeves, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you ma'am for recognizing me. This Saturday, December the seventeenth, we have an Agricultural Christmas for Kids. It will be at the Enon Ranch from twelve till three. Feel free to come out, this is with, in conjunction with Georgia State Representative Bandiche Thomas and Pastor Laurence A. Reeves from Trinity Fellowship Ministries, my pops. And so register, there will be free gifts, food games, livestock, hay rides, DJ. You can RSVP by calling four zero four six five six six three seven two. Four zero four six five six six three seven two. Other than that, join me each and every Monday night for my Monday call, Monday Night Live from six-thirty to seven-thirty, for those who are in the district. And where we come to a resolve, and we don't run from the issues, we run to them. And that being said, I love you all, and you can do absolutely nothing about it.
Councilwoman Sebastian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I just wanna wish everyone a very happy holidays. And I know some people may have the opportunity to take a break and spend a little bit more time with your families. I know I am looking forward to that. Secondly, I just wanna say very big congratulations to the staff, the students, the teachers, the parents of our six-eight championship football team, the Langston Hughes Panthers. We look forward to celebrating with everyone within the next few weeks. So listen out for the date of the celebration and what's gonna happen. And thank the entire council and mayor for supporting the resolution so we can put this on for our kids. Also want to thank the Creekside Band and their drum line for coming out to supporting. First ever District Four tree lighting, also the Bay Creek Middle School Chorus. And everyone that supported all the businesses, Dream Big, Nature's Way, Jolies. These are all community partners that came together to make this event happen. We were blessed from the heavens in the middle of the, in the middle of the night, but still it turned out to be an awesome event. And if you haven't seen our tree over there in District Four, you should come and have a look at it. It was decorated by two of District Four finance when it comes to events and decorations, Mr. Doc Dosman and my friend, Sister Sheila, Sheila Max. I know I'm probably forgetting someone, but blame it on my head and not my heart. It was the final District Four event for twenty-twenty-four. And twenty-twenty, sorry, twenty-twenty-two, I'm already looking forward to twenty-four. And I just want to, you know, say to council, my mayor, my council, and my colleagues here, this is the third event that got rained on in District Four this year. And you know why? Because we don't have a facility in District Four. So y'all gotta help me change that. I'm just saying, okay? So I'm just putting it out there now, that I am lobbying now for us to put a facility in District Four, okay? Lastly, I just wanna thank staff, this is year one for me, for the support. I know I've challenged you guys because you all weren't accustomed to so many things happening in District Four. So I know I've been a challenge this year to keep up with in some instances. But for the most part, you know, the parks and recs folks, they have been outstanding. The police, the fire, communications, you know, so I just wanna thank you guys for helping me to get through year one. And I'm certainly looking forward to a bigger and more exciting twenty-twenty-two in the great fabulous District Four. Thank you, guys. We make it rain in District Four, thank you.
Councilwoman Willis?
Thank you, ma'am. I want to let everybody know that there will be an extravaganza in partnership with state legislators, public safety, and my fellow colleagues this Saturday, December seventeenth, ten-to-one, at Woke Mall Park, a holiday extravaganza. So please make sure you come out and bring your family and your kids. I want to congratulate both, let's see how to say it, Reverend U.S. Senator Raphael Warnock on his victory. And I also wanna congratulate Councilmember Linda Pritchett on her victory. And I look forward to working with you. And I want to tell my six colleagues, twenty-twenty-two has been a rough year for me. And I wanna thank each of you, all six of you, Councilmember Williams, Councilmember Reeves, Councilmember Sebastian, Councilmember Gums, and Ralph for supporting me through my tough times. I really appreciate it, and I wanna thank the staff. Thank you, Ms. Alice Jones, for allowing your staff to come to Savannah, Georgia and support me through a rough time. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Councilwoman Gums?
Well, this is my favorite time of the year. I'm so perky and happy, and I'm sorry I forgot my little reindeer ears. So first I wanna say congratulations to Westlake's RJ Johnson on his outstanding football career, being the leading athlete in the state of Georgia and breaking Cam Newton's record of over nine thousand rushing yards. RJ will be attending the University of Toledo, Ohio. So he is going a far way away from the city of South Fulton. But he did receive a proclamation for his very own special day in our city. And he has promised to come back every year on that day to do something for the city of South Fulton. Very impressive young man, and certainly he will make the city proud. As Mr. Sebastian, Councilmember Sebastian mentioned, congratulations to the city's newest state champs, Langston Hughes Football Team. We're excited, that was a very, I don't know how many of you watched it, but it was rooting for them and they did good. So it was like a nail biter, but thank you all, and we're excited to celebrate them coming soon. I don't know if many of you have remember Mr. Valenzuela saying for the roundabout coming to Button Road and Stonemont Hill, there will be lights. It is the hope that Georgia Power will have those lights installed by the end of, we were hoping next week, but hopefully before the end of December. So there will be lights on that roundabout. Please stop running all over everything and messing up the landscape. I know it takes, and we're probably gonna put out a fact sheet of how to navigate that roundabout. I think that might be very important because it's pretty bad over there. But everything is coming along nicely. Also too, we won't be having to bring out the dolls this year. I'm a little sad about that, but we will be doing a District Two toy drive. We have partnered with some of the businesses over at the shops at Button Road, Stanley's, the Tea Shop, and a few others. And we will be supporting South Fulton families. So we have a collection all the way up until the twenty-second, and then we will have a distribution day on the Christmas Eve. So if you run it, if you go to the store and you can't find a toy or anything of that nature, please stop by, we'll have cocoa, cider, and then also too, Santa Claus and all of that good stuff will be out there. And my last thing is to clear up any misconceptions about West Dubs. There are two developments. One development has been approved, it was approved almost two years ago, which is the Curly Homes Single Family Subdivision. So that one is well on its way. There is something circulating about a meeting that I was not aware of for the West Dubs, which is across the street. They already know how I feel about that project. I hope very much so that the residents will let them know how they feel about it as well. But I just wanna let you know, those two are not, Curly Homes is not requesting a rezoning or modification. That project is well on its way. Other than that, I am wishing everyone a happy, happy holiday. Enjoy your family, be peaceful, and just love the city of South Fulton. That's all I got.
And last but not least, I want to congratulate Langston Hughes. It was indeed a pleasure to be with my colleagues on council, Councilwoman Sebastian, Councilwoman Gums, and myself as we sent them off to the state game, the championship game. And I'm looking forward to the upcoming celebration where we can all celebrate them. Final event for District One for the year is our Holiday Mixer, which will be on December twentieth at the Southwest Arts Center. I'm gonna open it up a little bit, it sold out really quickly. So thanks for all the District One residents who are planning to attend that event. Please remain, remember to bring a toy. The toys that we collect will support the fire department's efforts to service families on food and industrial. You know, our Fire Marshal has been doing that for a number of years in partnership with the Fire Department, and we wanna keep up that tradition. So that distribution is scheduled for December twenty-first, so that's the last chance. You can bring out a toy, and let's make sure we put some smiles on some children's faces. Thank you.
District Seven, Councilwoman Pritchett?
Thank you so much. I'm really excited to be here this evening, and thank you District Seven for your overwhelming vote and support. I appreciate the council who have been my friends throughout the years, and I'm glad to be back at City Hall in a different capacity today. I also am very proud, and I'm not sure if I'm right about this, but I think that I am proud to be the first Hispanic city councilwoman for South Fulton. But I don't know if that's exclusive, it's not exclusive. Okay, so I'm glad to join you as a Hispanic councilwoman here in the city. I am also pleased to announce that on Monday, I was sworn in yesterday, and we had Atlanta Braves world champion Otis Nixon that joined us, Councilwoman Willis, Councilwoman Williams, our city clerk, and many others. And it was just a wonderful moment where Judge Shamila Williams was able to swear me in so that I can participate in this meeting here today. I will also be having a swearing-in at my church, World Changers Church International, with my pastors, Kreflo and Taffy Dollar, that will be present to pray over me and pray over our district and pray over our city. So this is a community event where everyone is invited. However, I would love for you to RSVP so that I know how many chicken wings I need to order. But we will be having hors d'oeuvres and everything, but I would love for everyone, not just District Seven, to come out so that we can celebrate. Because District Seven is here, and now the city council is complete. And I would like to also announce that on Tuesday, we will be having a Christmas celebration at the fifty-yard line. So anyone in District Seven that would like to come out will be having eggnog and some good food and fun and fellowship. I will also like to reiterate what Mr. Valenzuela confirmed this evening, that I am so pleased that we will be getting a traffic light at Highway one thirty-eight known as Jonesboro Road and Bessada Road. That is a location or an intersection that has been very dangerous over the years. Many lives have been lost. I think three or four people died this year, and many others have gotten hurt. And I'm so glad that with the support of people in the community, that we were able to get this done. So I look forward to that happening, and I look forward to seeing you all again in twenty-twenty-three. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. May I have a moment of special privilege, sir?
Go ahead, Councilman Reeves.
All right, I just wanna drop this little point home out here, and as they say, it ain't no thing if you don't have that ring. And so congratulations to Langston Hughes, because all of the individual talents and individual trophies came together as collaboration to bring home that championship. And as we get ready to celebrate, you already know we gotta celebrate big, because they brought it home to South Fulton. And so that being said, this Friday night, oh, come on out to the granddaddy of city events. What is that I'm talking about? The outlaw classic. Come on out and celebrate at Burdette Gym where legends, that's the legendary court. Now, these courts over here, they scrimmage courts, but when you wanna be a legend, you come to Burdette. You come to the outlaw court. So come on this Friday, it starts at five o'clock, the game time is at six. Come and see these young men play in the heart, pride, and determination. I'll tell you them three words. It is not about the game and athletics, but it is more about the game of life and what he has instilled in the countless number of young and what he has instilled in the countless number of young men and young ladies, uh, he has coached and, uh, went on to be successful in life. And so I am biased towards that gym. It was erected in 1976. I was established in 1976. And so, uh, it's the year of the dragon, so you know we spitfire. So come on out, celebrate with us. Friday night outlaw classic. All right, thank you so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, the inimitable Councilman Corey Reeves. Today, uh, this month, December 27th, is Councilman Reeves' birthday. Could we just give him a round of applause for his, for his birthday? Um, I hope everyone enjoyed their Thanksgiving holiday. I want, and I don't know, I'm, I'm, some of this may be redundant, but I just, I, I do want to say special, uh, thanks to Mr. Isaac Cook and Fasten Off for their, uh, BK, 5K race. And Four Colors Mastinos, who has been putting on amazing, um, parties at our dog park, giving away all kinds of free treats. You really should, if you get a, if you get a text or a tweet from Zion, the first dog, you should definitely, if you have a dog, come out. Um, the, the other, the other special shout out I want to give is for Yanazda, uh, Lone Wolf, who is having, um, a medical fight now. But she founded this Friendsgiving event at Wilkerson Mill Park and it was phenomenal. In addition to having hundreds of people in the park, uh, one of the goals was to educate, uh, city of South Fulton residents about America's original inhabitants. And we had Native American nations from across the country, uh, come and bring their gifts and their talents and, and educate us, including the Maharan and the Choctaw of Georgia, the Seminole, all the way from Oklahoma, the Northern Cheyenne from Montana, the Lakota from South Dakota. These people really came from these places. Uh, the Lumbee from North Carolina and the Mayans all the way from Mexico. So thank you, uh, for that incredible event and, and we will do it again next Thanksgiving. And I want to give a special Thanksgiving welcome to, uh, uh, Ms. Coretta Prescott, who made me the best banana pudding I've ever had in my life. Uh, the Langston Hughes Panthers, as everyone has said, not only are they amazing on the field, but off the field, they, uh, that team has garnered over 50 offers from schools, including Howard, Morehouse, UGA, Auburn and the Ohio State. Um, I was out there at the game in the rain and the cold. I am paying for it now, but it was, it was an amazing time. During Thanksgiving week, we started getting calls right before we broke for Thanksgiving in the mayor's office. Uh, 26 residents in Beacon Ridge, uh, who were Section Eight residents received letters that they would be evicted on January 31st. Um, it ruined the Thanksgiving for, uh, many of them. But, uh, we came out, uh, and a special shout out to Fox Five, WSB, uh, Two and Atlanta News First. Um, we came out and inspected, uh, the apartments and talked with the residents and all 26 letters were rescinded. So these people will be able to stay in their homes for the rest of their lease. However, uh, there is still work to be done to make sure that people, both in apartment complexes and renting private units, are not being exploited by slum landlords. And so we are working on some legislation, Dr. Ryle and I and the city attorneys, and we will be bringing that to a work session soon. Uh, I'm out of time. There are so many events that I will be attending this weekend, including the Outlaw Classic, um, toy and essential giveaways that are happening for the next two weeks and Zion's Christmas party. You can follow him on the Gram at Zion Sun underscore. Uh, but you can find out about all these events and more, as well as an incredible play, Mother of God, that is at Southwest Arts Center.
Yes, it is amazing.
Uh, uh, you, uh, which is of course, um, staffed or, or being performed by several of my, my fellow graduates from the city, Tri-Cities High School. Uh, but you can find out more about all of these events by texting the word Fulton, F-U-L-T-O-N, to 33777. Merry Christmas, Feliz Navidad, Happy Kwanzaa, Happy Hanukkah and Happy New Year. South Fulton forever. Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of council, that brings us item 12, uh, council approval of renewal of the Animal Control Intergovernmental Agreement between Fulton County and the city of South Fulton for a one-year period to end December 31st, 2023, in the amount of $846,533.26 to be funded out of the Code Enforcement Professional Services line item.
All right, uh, I'll entertain a motion.
Um, I make a motion to, uh, approve the Animal Control Intergovernmental Agreement for a one-year period to end December 31st, 2023, in the amount of $846,533.26, as well as to approve the purchase of a mini pumper for fire operations for Bouts Brothers in the amount of $284,943 and 200 and thou, 200,000 for a fire safety trailer for fiscal year 23 budget.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? I have just some quick discussion. Uh, Mr. Salomonica, Lieutenant Salomonica, who are finally getting that truck? Uh, I've, I've said this to you off the record, uh, Madam City Manager, but I do want to say it on the record. The nearly $1 million that we pay for animal control, I just don't think that we get our money's worth. And so in this next year, I would like for us to just explore some alternative options, um, to, I, I've had people who were personally attacked by dogs and it took weeks for someone to even show up. So I, I, I just do want to put that on the radar, that, that hopefully in the next year we can find some alternative or some supplement for the lackluster service I feel we receive on that issue. Did you, did someone else have anything? All right, all right, um, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes, this is a motion by Councilwoman Marrow, seconded by Councilwoman McGum, to approve items 12, 13 and 14. Roll call vote, Councilmember Ryle?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
Those items were approved unanimously.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
That brings us to item 16, request council approval to accept a local maintenance and improvement grant in the amount of $1,232,670.47 and submit a listing of projects that are eligible to receive funding for the L-Med contingent on the city of South Fulton, providing the required 30% match in the amount of $369,801.14 funding to be provided, uh, from the budgeted grant funding.
I move to approve.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve, um, item 16, request council's approval to accept the local maintenance and improvement grant in the amount of $1,232,000. And also item number 17, request council approval for a project framework agreement, uh, between GDOT and the city of South Fulton for streetscape improvement projects. And also item number 18, we cra, I can't even talk today. Request approval, council approval to award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specifications of ITB number 22-101, Hamilton Road at Stonewall Tail Road intersection. Oh, we finally getting a light.
So moved.
That's it. Oh, we getting a light, yes.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? All right, uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote to approve items 16 through 18. Councilmember Ryle?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis? Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
Those items were approved unanimously.
All right, please sound the next item.
That brings us to the rezoning invariances. Uh, the first one is item 19, U22-009, request council consideration for a special use permit to establish a new RV campground on Tail Road on 21.88 acres of land. It's located in District Four.
All right, and just to be clear, we do have to take these separately?
Yes, we do.
I'll entertain a motion.
Um, Mr. Mayor, may I, um, I just wanted to point out that this project from the onset appeared to have several problems with it. And I, I agree with staff and with the planning commission's recommendation. Um, Teal Road is very narrow. It's unpaved. That area is very, um, rural. We have, um, would have concerns over the environmental impact with the streams close by. The applicant is suggesting septic tank, for example. Um, given, um, Teal Road and the size of these vehicles, we would foresee problems with maneuvering these vehicles in and out and even within the area itself that is proposed. And it's in, it's inconsistent with our comprehensive plan. And finally, I did meet with this person after he made the application and I asked him if there was a minimum stay for people to stay on that site and the answer was no. It didn't look as if he had considered that as an issue. So therefore, um, I'm going to make a motion for us to deny this application at this point.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, uh, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a motion to deny. Roll call vote, Councilmember Ryle?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis? Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
That item is denied unanimously.
Please sound the next item.
Next item, Z22-014, request council consideration to rezon from AG1 to M1 to construct 40, 491,000 square feet warehouse on five acres of land. The subject property is located along Campbell Drive, generally bounded by North Commerce Drive to the north, Washington Road to the east, Spring Street to the south and Campbell Drive to the west. It's located in District Three.
You gonna give me permission, entertain a motion?
Yes, I will entertain a motion.
Um, I'm going to, uh, recuse myself from this vote, um, because, uh, the last zoning commission, um, this project is located directly behind, um, my mother-in-law's house. And to avoid any conflict of voting, I think it's my best interest to let my colleagues handle this vote. I do want to put two things on the record. One, the city of East Point council members did meet with me and my, um, family members. And there are now conditions that East Point did vote and put in place to protect city of South Fulton residents. So unlike most cities, uh, who have projects, East Point did try to work with South Fulton. It was information that they did not meet with South Fulton and that is not true. The council members came over, walked the property and did vote on East Point to protect the city of South Fulton. The other information I want, uh, fact that I want to point that most of this project is in South Fulton. There's only five acres that is, uh, that the city of South Fulton, the rest of the property is in East Point. So although this is, um, a denial, um, and more than likely will not pass, we would not be able to stop East Point, uh, because they have their own autonomy. They have their own rules and they have already started construction. And it was put out that South Fulton has plans, big plans for that property. That is not true. We don't own most of the property. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to deny.
Second.
All right, any further comments? Thank you, uh, Mayor Ingram and the city council of East Point. Councilman Sebastian?
Yeah. Um, is there, it sounds from the presentation that was made tonight that from the city of South Fulton side, this piece of land is acting like a buffer?
Yeah, this is, we, the vote is on the floor. We're not supposed, we're not in discussion.
I thought we.
Whenever it's on the seven o'clock.
We made a motion in a second.
Oh, okay, I didn't know we were in discussion. I don't know why.
Oh, what, what?
We're in discussion, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. But the applicant also said that, um, that there basically is no way for us to access this piece except going through, um, East Point. So is the buffer that much, is the buffer that important that we would not entertain an exchange of land with East Point?
The staff denied and so the planning commission.
Okay. All right, I'm just starting to question out there.
The staff denied, so the planning.
I'm just starting to question out there. All right.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a motion to deny. Motion by Councilmember Gums, seconded by Councilmember Ryle. Roll call vote, Councilmember Ryle?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis is recusing. Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett? That item is denied 6-0.
Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
This is item Z22-007, request council consideration to rezon from AG1 to R4 to construct 26 single-family residential dwellings on 1260 acres of land. Uh, Councilmember Ryle is correct that, uh, a deferral was offered, uh, on this item during the adoption of the agenda.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we approve, uh, request for approval of an alcohol license at Petra Cart. You see, doing business as Cascade Shell for an alcohol license for the retail of wine and malt beverages. Um, I also move that we approve the alcohol license request, council approval of an alcohol license for Rego Convenience LLC, doing business as Roosevelt Chevron for alcohol license for retail of sales of wine and beer, um, on 4891 Roosevelt Highway, South Fulton. I also move that we request approval for alcohol license for Fabrin Blessings Incorporated, doing business as Shell Food Mart for an alcohol license for the retail sales of wine and malt beverages at 7745 Spence Road, Fabrin. I also would like to make a point that those locations were already selling, um, beer and wine and, um, this is just the change of ownership. And this is why the process had to, uh, we had to go through the process, process of getting new alcohol license approval.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Uh, any discussion? I see Councilwoman Pritchett in the queue.
Speak into the mic. Sorry, I had it off. Um, for line item 24, and my apologies because I'm new here. Um, I wanted to know, um, what was the recommendation, um, uh, from Chief Meadows on this? If anyone has visited this location, this location is around the corner from where I live. I don't see any problem with it, but I would just, you know, for just being responsible, wanting to know what the recommendation was.
Yes, Councilwoman, um, um, the recommendation, staff recommendation was for approval for this is a change of ownership.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, seeing no further questions or comments, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a roll call vote to approve items 22, 23 and 24. Councilmember Ryle?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Council, oh, Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
Those items were approved unanimously.
Mayor, I have a parliamentary inquiry.
Yes.
I just want to clarify that we did not need to vote on the deferral for Wallace Road, that that was taken care of when we adopted the agenda.
Right, um, so for item 21, uh, Councilmember Ryle included to defer that item, item 21, to January. And that vote was taken during the, uh, the adoption of the agenda. Absent, uh, any objection from legal counsel, I thought that item was deferred.
All right. Please sound the next item. Did we vote on this item?
Yes, you did.
Please sound the next item.
Next item is item 25, under economic development, request council approval of a resolution adopting the old National Livable Centers Initiative Plan and Recommendations. This is, uh, CDRA, uh, Mr. Derek Hall and the Collaborative Firm.
Ladies and gentlemen, I bring to you the legendary Mr. Michael Hightower.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'm joined by two of our colleagues, Al Lane, who many of you know who worked with the city of College Park for several years as economic development director and of course our project manager, Adam Ivey. We have five minutes, we will do within four and a half. I'm gonna take the first minute, Adam will take the next three minutes and I will close out as we talk about the next steps. So Adam, you got about two and a half minutes and I'll be back.
All right. Thank you for your time this evening. Just again, we wanted to just provide a quick overview of the Old National Highway LCI. Some of the project highlights. Again, the LCI grant was awarded back to the city on December twenty-twenty-one. We began the existing conditions and our community engagement task back in the spring twenty-twenty-two. This past summer, we developed our catalytic site plan and some of the urban design concepts for sites along Old National Highway. We also held our transportation coordination meeting with different entities including GDOT, MARTA, and ARC in August of twenty-twenty-two. And then we also held our implementation, final implementation strategy plans. And we took that to the community back in October twenty-twenty-two. And just wanted to identify some of the highlights within the one-hundred-day action plan. And just a reminder to council that the one-hundred-day action plan essentially initiates the day after this is adopted by a city council. So what these steps and what these measures are really to ignite the overall LCI plan and to really get these projects implemented. So just a quick highlights from that. You know, we wanted to initiate opportunities to promote Old National Highway to brokers and developers, including hosting a broker and developer day for the Old National Corridor. Also wanted to engage GDOT on transportation safety and pedestrian improvements that they've identified for Old National Highway. That includes four pedestrian crosswalks along Old National Highway, two that specifically connect existing MARTA bus stops. Next, we wanted to reach out to MARTA to study Old National Highway for enhanced transit services. Some of the other corridors along, in the Fulton County, South Fulton County, as well as in Clayton County are being investigated for enhanced transit services. And we felt that that inclusion for Old National Highway was required as well. Next, we wanted to update the future land use and zoning to align with the vision for Old National Highway to encourage those mixed uses along the corridor. Next, coordinate with city departments on code enforcement issues for Old National Highway, including issues with litter. That was one of the major themes that we received at a couple of our community meetings along the way. And then last, for the one-hundred-day action plan highlights, provide a platform for continued community engagement opportunities for Old National Highway stakeholders. We wanted to ensure that people within the community stay engaged and help promote the overall vision for the Old National Corridor. Next, for the five-year implementation plan highlights, wanted to develop opportunities for placemaking along Old National via art programs and installations along the corridor. Update, next update the city's zoning and future land use to align with the vision for the Old National Highway. Also wanted to recruit an Old National Highway Task Force that works to promote Old National Highway community as well. That basically provides some of that brand messaging and works with other community stakeholder groups along the way. Next, implement transportation safety and pedestrian improvements along Old National Highway. GDOT has identified on top of the raised median project with the crosswalks under northern segments of Old National Highway. They've also have planned projects for extensions of the sidewalks on both sides of Old National Highway from Flat Shoals to State Route one thirty-eight on the southern half of the study area. Next, we wanted to work to expand the Aerotropolis CID boundary to include businesses along Old National Highway. This will really benefit the corridor in regards of the collaboration with the business community in regards to some of the beautification needs for the area, safety as well as transportation, specifically last mile connectivity from transit to the final destination for travelers. Next, wanted to create programs and resources to aid local small businesses working with the city's economic development department. And then lastly, the enforced enforcement issues for Old National Highway, including issues with litter. So at this point, wanted to take any comments or questions that you may have tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Adam. I would just conclude by highlighting maybe three or four critical items. I want to first thank Derek Hall, Artie Jones, Chief Meadows, some of his staff who were very helpful throughout this process. They were, I want to just say, Madam City Manager, your staff was very cooperative, I want to thank them for that process. Secondly, I also want to say a few very basic things. Being a native of South Fulton and of College Park and the area, we've seen, as I was hearing Corey Reeves, he made me feel a little old. I remember my very first campaign, he was about this hot chief when I was having to buy signs from his family. So I want to thank Councilman Reeves, Councilmember Williams, and the mayor for participating in many of the community events. So thank you. But I think three or four things need to happen to keep it, to really see a difference. As Adam mentioned, number one, one of the things that we had, and Mr. Gums, you know, you've been involved in community events so much, we heard a lot of input on three or four basic elements. Code enforcement, code enforcement, code enforcement. Secondly, making some development change. I'm gonna get back to that. And finally, transportation enhancements. In two thousand and four, there was another study done and I think in the document, some of the improvements happened, we were not involved in that study, but that was the first LCI and we did an update with that in the plan. So I think moving forward, I would just certainly suggest heavy emphasis on code enforcement, transportation by Mr. Venezuela's organization and others to make sure that we see those elements. But the final most important piece, and I mentioned this when I was here before, one of our native songs from the area is T. Dallas Smith. Y'all know, you, me at the meeting, T. Dallas Smith. He was part of the consulting team. We carved out a portion of this grant to hire him to consult us about how do we change this area, not just talk. And T. Dallas Smith was a consultant for the team. And one of the things that he and I have talked about as late as we met this past Saturday again, about, he said, "Michael, until we change the broker's mentality in certain areas, we can't make a change." So one of the things that we are, we are asking as you adopt this plan, hopefully tonight, is that you allow us to work with your city manager, Mr. Hall, Artie Jones, to embark upon the next five to six months, and we'll come back before you in January for some kind of consideration, to take that huge step of implementation. Adam mentioned five or six specific items. And one of those was the next step to look at redevelopment in some critical pockets in the corridor. So I would certainly be happy to answer any questions. We are approaching four and a half minutes now, so I'm about thirty seconds away. With my own timekeeper, I know you're laughing at me, Ms. Gums, but we are approaching five minutes now. But that, those are the takeaways from this study. Chief Meadows, I also want to say we heard some very good positive responses from your staff, from citizens about how, what you guys are doing. Very responsive. And I think that was one of the good things that we heard about, the responses of your police department. And I want to thank them for that activity in that corridor as well. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, Adam, myself, or Al. But it was a great study, but the key thing now is not just having a study that looked good. How do we make things happen after we adopt this plan? So I would conclude by saying that, and I think there's a resolution that Mr. Hall will present for your consideration. We'd be happy to take any questions. If there are any questions.
I don't see anyone in the queue. Councilwoman Gums, I'll just go down the aisle.
I'm also in the queue. I'm also in the queue.
Okay.
My, my question is just very basic. Are you able to provide a copy of this presentation to the council?
Yes, ma'am. I believe, I believe that should have been in your pack, but the show notes is yes.
Okay.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, we'll make sure that the city manager, if you don't have it, that the clerk and the city manager will have it before you get to your desk tomorrow morning.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Show notes is yes.
Councilwoman Willis?
So my thing is, I talked with Mr. Hall when I saw this coming through for approval and of course it's going to be approved, but it's just a study with recommendations like the CDAP study with recommendations that was approved by this council in twenty-twenty. And so I have talked with Mr. Hall and I've sent an email to the mayor because one of the low-hanging fruit funds that we can go ahead and start tapping into is the tree fund. And I've asked, and the tree fund ordinance dictates that the money has to be evenly split amongst all districts. And so some of the things that we talked about, and I've asked him to bring in accounting and review of the tree fund, and I am proposing an amendment to the ordinance of the tree fund so that he can, he's recommended that we use the tree fund to do some of the landscaping, both, for both studies, the LCI and the CDAP. And he's focusing on CDAP because that was approved in twenty-twenty-one, but he also wants to focus on LCI. And so we have two studies now that will be approved and we need a plan to, a recommendations on how to implement both of them. So it's not one or the other. Once we approve this tonight, we are going to, Ms. Sally Jones, we need to work with, whether it's the collaborative firm or we got to put a RFP, we need to work on a plan to implement both of those studies. Because CDAP was approved in twenty-twenty and we are approving this today in twenty-twenty-two.
Let me just say on the part of, we're talking about, we're gonna be asking for an extension, for a short extension for the six months on Old National. So we ask for an extension for that with our contract, on clarity, so whatever else you're doing on that, it's fine. We're asking for that very specifically for your consideration.
Councilwoman Williams?
So first of all, thank you, Commissioner, for all of your hard work with this LCI. It has, I know it has been in many ways a labor of love for you and certainly for me as long-term resident of the area. It has also been very helpful because as we've had other discussions with people wanting to develop things, you know, wanting to bring businesses, wanting to do development. We recently had the conversation about MARTA and its importance to the people who rely on it in the neighborhood, that I reference this LCI study often to make sure that people understand that what we are developing, what we're doing next needs to fit with this plan. And so I just wanted you to know that I appreciate your work. I appreciate the work of the collaborative firm and all that you've done over the past many months to get us to this point of having a plan that we can improve, and I certainly do. If the opportunity presents itself to continue to work with the collaborative firm, I would certainly welcome, you know, being able to figure out next steps.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and thank you for your involvement and participation.
Councilman Reeves?
Thank you, Commissioner Hightower and you and your staff at the collaborative firm. And as I always say, collaborations win championships. And so y'all do a great job. And so we already had a discussion too with the Arborist about, and partnered with Trees Atlanta to come up with some tree plant in the Long Old National, the corridor. And so I think that that's a good way to go is with the tree plant. But something that, and that's possible, I don't know, Madam City Manager, if it is possible that we can match funds or something to get lights for the holidays along Old National. I know it's like, you know, it's during the season and, you know, a couple of weeks away from Christmas, but, you know, we have a celebration on the twentieth, so I'm just gonna throw it out there and ask because, you know, nothing is impossible, you know, not in the city of South Fulton. And so I would just say that if that can be done, I don't know, I don't know, maybe, maybe. Anyway, I just thought I'd ask, and so if it can be, that'd be awesome. But thank you for all of the work that y'all have done, you and your team. Amazing job.
Thank you, and thanks again for your involvement.
Thank you, there is, there is some piece of paper, Mr. Reeves, out there about pole attachments, right?
Yeah.
That we did with, so, so just know that that is, that is coming, even if we don't get it in the next seven days. In your recommendations, I hope that you will include specifically what we need to do next, how much it costs, and when you need to check by. We'll be doing a mid-year budget adjustment in March.
And we'll be communicating that with Mr. Hall and his staff, and of course, he would, of course, include the other appropriate heads from the city manager's office.
Awesome, thank you so much. And seeing no one else in the queue, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next, I'm sorry, we need to vote on that. I'm sorry. I felt like I was in a work session, go ahead.
No, I, I move approval of a resolution adopting the Old National Livable Centers Initiative Plan and Recommendations.
So move.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
It's a roll call vote to approve, Councilmember Rau.
Yes.
Councilmember Gums.
Yes.
Councilmember Willis. Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item was approved unanimously.
All right, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
We're at item twenty-six, this is a second read and request council approval of an amendment to the alcohol beverages ordinance regulating hours of operation for consumption. This is sponsored by council members Williams, Gums, Sebastian, and Willis.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the council approval of amendment to alcohol beverages ordinance regulating hours of operation as well as an ordinance of amendment to the twenty-twenty-one comprehensive plan.
First read, first read. Go to twenty.
Oh, oh, go to where?
Twenty-nine.
I'm sorry. As well as request for approval to award to the responsive and responsible proponent whose proposal to determine to be the most advantageous meeting. The specifications, RFP twenty-two thousand management and administration for the American Rescue Plan for mortgage assistance in the amount of a hundred thousand dollars. I also move that we approve a request for approval of amendment to the low engineering contract.
Councilmember.
Thirty-one.
I'm sorry, I move that we approve a request for approval to purchase a Ford three hundred ten regular cab V-eight long bed truck at a cost of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-four. And I think this, I move that we approve emergency ordinance declaring state of emergency to the city of South Fulton, provided for city managers to be held virtually, provided for an effective date and for the other lawful purpose.
We got one more.
And I also move that we request for approval of January twenty-twenty-three council meeting schedule.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion? I am going to ask if we could just remove the last item for a bit of discussion, if that is possible, the approval of the calendar. I had a suggestion that I emailed to everyone about a week ago, I did not hear back. So if we could just take that one off and talk about it for two minutes.
Okay.
We also have some other items that have been added to the agenda. We're not quite at the end.
Yeah, just let me state for the record that item twenty-seven and twenty-eight were first reads. Item thirty, which is a request council approval amendment to the low engineering contract for professional services, that's being removed at the request of the city manager. At this time, it will be brought back in January.
With all due respect, Mayor, we want to go ahead and move forward because we did get your suggestion, we did caucus about it, and we don't agree with not having any meetings in December, so we want to move forward, thank you.
All right, just to ask, are we, are we okay with at least having two meetings in November so that we don't have these three meeting in one sessions in November?
Yeah, I agree with that.
I would, I would like to never have meetings like this again, just personally.
Right.
November, two minutes, that's fine.
Okay, so.
Did we take June off?
Yeah, we took.
So we got amended.
So let me go ahead and remove.
I thought that we had all, I thought that we.
Can we just take item twenty-six by itself?
Yeah.
We're in discussion.
That's what I did ask. That's what I did ask.
What I thought, I thought that we had agreed, or maybe that was just a conversation we had, you and I had about the June being GMA.
We have demanded, we have demanded. So I think we should take it off and deal with it.
Okay, so let me restate my, let me, I move to approve everything, and I'm gonna remove the council meeting, the number 33 for us to vote on separately.
For amendment. On 26?
At 26.
Yeah, 26 by itself. And we're gonna take item 26 by itself?
No.
No.
Alright, Mr. Clerk, will you just please recall what we're voting on now?
Yes, I have a motion by Councilmember Willis, seconded by Councilmember Gums, to approve item 26, item 29, item 31, and item 32.
Alright, it's been properly moved.
It's already been seconded.
Properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote.
Are we in discussion?
I'm sorry. Discussion.
Okay, so item 26 is talking about the hours of operation of consumption. It's for moving the drink hours from two back to three AM, which is gonna have the clubs established and open till four AM. And in this ordinance, and I can have Chief Meadows to speak to this, that the two officers to be certified post-officers to be one hour after closing applies to every single business, and not just the businesses that offers, that have shoe models, you know. And so, but it's to every single business. And Chief, would you please opine to that or speak to that?
Sir? That was my understanding, that every business that would remain open would hire off-duty police officers till an hour after their parking lots were cleared. One of the issues that we had initially, before we rolled back those hours, was shootings, people lingering and loitering in parking lots after the business had closed. And so that was one of the reasons that I asked that we put that provision in the alcohol ordinance.
That's not in here as we speak, and I even went so far to ask for a pour by the drink tax, if they want to expand that, because this is directly related to, you know, that hour does make a difference in crime and quality of life crimes. And would you say, Chief, since you initiated going, rolling back from three to two, that there was a reduction in the quality of life crimes during that timeframe?
We did notice a reduction in crimes after, after hours, and making sure that those parking lots were clear. Since that time, we haven't seen nearly as many shootings after hours.
Correct. This is going to directly affect it in the districts that have atmosphere bar, restaurant, clubs, and it was gonna directly affect that, but we'll address that at a later time. However, that needs to be into the language into this ordinance that is for every single bar, restaurant that wants to pour after 2:00 AM and back to three, as that needs to be in there per the chief requirements of this here ordinance.
Mayor, may I be recognized?
As soon as Councilwoman, Councilman Reeves relinquishes the floor.
Well, the one I had is not in there.
I said I couldn't get in the queue as soon as he started talking.
Councilman Reeves, are you, do you yield?
Well, yes, I yield, but I was, I would just say this last little thing is, from the, can I get those stats on the, from today? And then we'll monitor this every 30 days. And so I can guarantee you, this is not gonna be a good decision. So that's all I have to say.
Okay, Councilwoman Willis?
Okay, so let me clear up a few things. First of all, I spoke with Chief Meadows regarding this ordinance. And Chief Meadows, and it went through the legislative process. Everybody was copied on the email. Councilmember Reeves, I would suggest that you pay attention because you have this concern, and it was addressed. The amendment was added to the ordinance. Am I correct, Mr. McClendon? It was amended and added to the ordinance for security to be added to the ordinance that all establishments that serve alcohol until 3:00 PM must have security an hour, an hour after they close. Am I correct, Chief Meadows and the attorney? And that amendment went through the legislative process, and it went through the entire legislative process. Now, the clubs, as I recall, the establishments were open until 3 o'clock. And then when the pandemic hit, we had issues with shootings, we had issues with people packing out the clubs, and due to the pandemic, we went, we reduced the hour to 2:00. Now, some of the establishments have come and said that that has hurt in their business, and they would like to be open until 3:00. And so what I did do, and I would also like to add that we removed Councilmember Reeves as a sponsor, because he requested to be removed as a sponsor. What I did do is work with Chief Meadows, and Chief Meadows said that he agreed to this, as long as they, we put in an ordinance that they have security an hour after they close. So we will be covered. The problem was, we did not have that in the ordinance. And so you had individuals that were serving alcohol until 3:00, and they didn't have anybody in the parking lot, securing the parking lot once the establishment was closed. And so it is not true that it's in the ordinance. It applies to all establishments. It went through the legislative process as an amendment. Mr. McClendon did that. And I feel that if we are ensuring that business owners provide security in the parking lot an hour after they close, and they are complaining that this is gonna help steal revenue in their business, then we should take it back to what it used to be. And the only reason we took it to 2:00, because we were in a pandemic. Now, let's talk about the alcohol pouring tax. That is a separate issue. And I have talked with the finance team, and we are already collecting, it's called excise tax. We are already collecting alcohol excise tax at 3%. So we are already in alignment with the other municipalities. We are already collecting that extra tax. Not only did I talk with finance, they sent me the form, and they showed me the book of all the restaurant owners who serve alcohol who is paying this additional tax. So the last thing we should do, in my opinion, is try to talk about taxing people who are already paying additional excise tax at 3% when they are already saying that they are still trying to recover, and they are trying to recover from the pandemic. All we're doing is going back to what we did pre-pandemic. The pandemic is now pretty much over, and Chief Meadows agreed that if we put this provision in, then we should be okay. Even though we did cluster voting, Councilmember Reeves, you still can tell the clerk, if you don't agree with this, that you would like to vote against number 26, and he can record your vote as a no. So don't feel obligated to support this if you don't. Thank you.
Oh, I absolutely do not support it. Thank you.
Councilman Sebastian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you much. Chief, I, I supported this, one, because it was going back to something that was previously on the books.
Right.
And secondly, the businesses, the businesses were saying that they're, it'll be good for their bottom line and with the additional security measures. But I would really want to see, I agree with Councilmember Reeves, I really want to see some tracking and some data as it relates to activities or the impact of this, if we can figure that out. So if we need to do any further tweaks, we can come back at a later date and do some tweaks. Thanks, sir.
Because alcohol license falls in our purview, one of the things we've asked Lieutenant Esprit to do is to track incidences for those businesses, so that when they become a nuisance, we'll have the data. And so certainly we can put that into an easy to read report for everyone involved.
Councilwoman Williams?
I'm sorry, Mr. Attorney Hyman. Based on that discussion, 26 should probably handle like 33 separately when you get ready to vote.
Yes, I agree.
Do we need to remake that motion, or can we just?
Maker can amend the motion, so that's Councilmember Willis.
I would like to amend to the motion to exclude 26 and, and it was 30, it was 32, no, yeah, was it? Yeah, 26 and 33. And we can make those motions separate. Everything else.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Yes, this is a motion to approve items.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Are we, we're, this is the motion to amend, not the motion to approve. Are we gonna just do the vote at the same time?
No, I said I accepted his friendly amendment.
Right.
So, okay. Well, I'm sorry, before we, before we call for the vote, I do just want to say to Councilman Reeves, because I've been on national for many years, and I do hear your concerns. I think that we give it a try for six months to a year, and then, you know, well, I really think a year, we could get like a year's worth of like post-pandemic data aligned with our new BEAT studies, just to see if the problems are the same. And also, just consider this, it's not a mandate. So some businesses may decide it's not worth it, you know, to stay open for two more hours, whether it's the, whether it's the, you know, the, the, the cost of the police, or that they just can't find waiters that wanna, you know, they're just not making enough money, right? So, you know, so I just think we should, we should definitely give it a try. And there are, I agree with Councilwoman Willis. There are, I've heard from lots of businesses that they are trying to compete, even with cities like East Point. And folks are, it's not just that folks are leaving early. Sometimes folks just don't come out because they know if they start somewhere else, they can, they can stay later. So I hope that we do give it a try. Councilwoman, did you speak already, Councilwoman Williams?
Yeah.
Cause you're in the queue.
That's the old.
That's the old queue. Okay, Councilman Sebastian?
I spoke already, sir.
Alright, alright, let's go ahead and call the vote then, I'm sorry.
So the first motion is a motion to approve item 21, 29, 31, and 32, sponsored by Councilmember Willis, seconded by Councilmember Sebastian. Roll call vote, Councilmember Rowell?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums. Councilmember Willis.
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Yes.
And Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
Those items are approved unanimously. We are now on item 26, which is the second read and request council approval of an amendment to the alcohol beverages ordinance regulating hours of operation for consumption.
Mayor, I need to make a correction. Can we, cause we, he did said he reached out to the attorney's office. Can we exclude Councilmember Reeves as a sponsor, because he was shown as a sponsor on this? And then I move that we approve this measure. Thank you.
It's Councilmember, just for the record, Mayor Pro Tim Reeves did contact me earlier to remove his name as a sponsor.
Okay, thank you. I move that we approve this measure.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rowell?
Nay.
Councilmember Gums? Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Nay.
Councilmember Williams? And Councilmember Pritchett.
Yes.
That item is approved, five to two.
Alright, Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is item 33, request council approval of the January 2023 council meeting schedule. And I believe the council wishes to consider the full 12-month calendar, the annual calendar.
I believe there are some amendments, Council, Dr. Rowe?
Yes, I move that due to GMA, and us being at GMA for a week in June, that we not have that June meeting. Oh, GMA.
Yes.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I agree.
Alright.
Just a regular meeting, so we'd have the work session, but we would not have the, the.
Regular meeting.
Let me think about that. If we're meeting, then we probably need to do one meeting a month, like we do November. You don't want to, you don't want to do anything? You want to do the work session? No. It's not? We have a lot of training in June.
And I think after, after five months of legislation, because we legislate a lot, our, our staff would probably enjoy the little summer break.
I'll go with that. So, so just to be clear, we, we not gonna have a work session either in June? Okay. Okay, I just.
Whole month of June off, and the whole month of December.
Alright, I, I want to ask that we have a work session in, on the 14th, on the second Tuesday, and a regular meeting on the fourth Tuesday, which is the 28th.
Of November.
In November?
Of November.
Correct. I agree with that.
It doesn't, it doesn't conflict with Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving is on the 21st, the third week of November.
Okay, one more question. It doesn't conflict with any voting, because you know, that does, you know.
No, we're just going back to our, we'll, we'll just continue our regular meeting schedule, schedule. We'll have the regular meeting and the zoning hearing on the second Tuesday. I'm sorry, the work session and the zoning hearing on the second Tuesday, and then the regular meeting on the fourth Tuesday. And the items heard at the second Tuesday meeting will be voted on on the fourth.
But the second Tuesday in November is usually voting day.
The first Tuesday in November, I checked this calendar. November 7th is voting day.
Okay.
So is that cool?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can we get a roll call vote for that?
Just for that one, or?
Just for that, because I have one more. Cause we wrote, we did a vote for.
We didn't do a vote for Rowell.
We didn't vote for.
We just, we just talked about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's. Okay, so, well, the, well, the last one is December, December 2023. If we have to have a meeting, can we just have a regular meeting and not have a zoning hearing and a work session? Can we just do the regular meeting?
No, I. Can I ask the attorney the question?
Don't, don't the work sessions and the zoning hearings inform the agenda for the regular meeting? So I think, because they're, they're, I mean, if you look, if you look at our agendas, they're pretty much, if we were to come in and just vote and not editorialize on every single thing, most of what's on the agenda should be perfunctory, because it's all been discussed and fleshed out during the work session and during the zoning. So if we don't have work session and zoning, we don't really have agenda items for a regular meeting, not to mention the fact that the fourth Tuesday in December next year, assuming my calendar is good, is the day after Christmas.
I'm sorry, I just want to be clear. I wasn't saying have the regular meeting on the fourth Tuesday. I was saying have the regular meeting on the second Tuesday. And I just want to note that in this agenda, there are at least 20 items that have nothing to do with zoning. At the end of the year, we're always doing purchasing. There's, there's a lot on this, on this agenda, but, but it's just a suggestion. If you all just want to do the first two, we will have a, one of these meetings next year in December.
Well, no, because, look, I, I'm not interested in staying in meetings every meeting until 10, 11, 12, 1. So I, I in no way want to prolong time, because we're all tired and hungry, and I got a 9:00 AM breakfast with the dean tomorrow. I'm just trying to understand how, if we don't have work session, and we don't have zoning, and we just do agenda items, that's gonna pile everything that would be in the work session and in the zoning into the January calendar, which is gonna make that, that meeting long, unless, unless, and here's a novel idea, we can discipline ourselves to not editorialize about every single thing.
You already know that's not gonna happen. That's not gonna happen.
Councilwoman Williams, I think that that is a wonderful suggestion. However, those of us on this side of the room that have been doing it for five years know that that is not, we are who we are.
That is not gonna happen.
We, and, and.
We were so close until Cory messed us up.
And I, and I, and I, I do hear, do hear your concern. So I'm just gonna take it off the table, and we can debate it when we, you know, we can debate it in next November. So I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna remove that. Let's just do the first two suggestions.
Thank you.
So we just have the two, two suggestions?
Yes. I'm sorry, Councilman Sebastian is in the queue.
See, I always try to do things right, but you know. Y'all, I'm tired and I'm hungry. That's why I think my name is Willis. Mr. Mayor, I would love for us to keep the December meeting this with ourselves, because I think as we approach the end of the year, people are likely to try and push projects through and all that sort of stuff, right? So I would really love for us to, even though we. So, I would really love for us to, even though we have to have a three-in-one meeting, discipline ourselves only things that are necessary, right? And, um, try and keep it short. Because from November, if someone is trying to get a project completed or pushed through to zoning and we're gonna tell them wait until January, you know, that could mean people missing their closing, right? It could have a financial impact on what folks are doing. So, um, I know we're looking to streamline that whole process for the zoning and all that. So, I would just say, keep the meeting, but let's do it succinctly. Yeah, please. Okay. One meeting in December. So, I'm telling?
Yeah, we say we leave December. The only thing we changed is getting rid of June and then we agreed to have it to be until November.
Right.
So. Thank you, everyone, for your comments. Dr. Rau, did you wanna make a comment or are you willing to?
Uh, yeah, um, I was wondering where our zoning calendar is, but as he mentioned, until we adopt this, they can, uh, they used to come hand to hand, but whatever. Going forward, I, I'd like that to happen because we're gonna go into January and we don't have dates set as it stands right now. We can vote after I finish talking.
Yeah, yeah, so.
All right, uh, so the hours, the hours at hand, we're gonna go ahead and call this vote.
So, we have, uh.
Do we have a motion and a second? Do you need that?
We, we, Councilmember Rau made a motion, but I didn't get a second yet.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded, uh.
So, I, so I have a, a motion by Councilmember Rau, seconded by Councilmember Gums to, uh, take off the entire month of June, no meetings. And then for November, uh, have the regular two meetings in November. So, roll call vote, Councilmember Rau?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
Those items were approved unanimously.
Mr. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is the, uh, add-on, uh, calendar and, yes. The first one is the, uh, rescension of the city council's previous vote to require a mask mandate within city buildings. That was, uh, proposed by Councilmember Willis to rescind the council's action.
I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the, uh, to rescind the mask mandate, mandatory mask mandate.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, please sound the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rau?
Uh, yes.
Co- Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
That item was approved unanimously.
Thank you. Please sound the next item.
And the last item is a resolution authorizing the city manager to allocate funding and/or in-kind services and partnering with the Fulton County School Board to celebrate the city of South Fulton's Langston Hughes High School winning the Georgia High School Six-Say State Football Championship and for other lawful purposes. And we do need a dollar figure at this time prior to approval.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilman Sebastian?
Um, so, we had a meeting earlier today, uh, with the principal of the school. Ms. Smooth, thank you very much for the work that you did on short notice. Um, she did put together a draft budget of about eleven thousand dollars. So, I wanna say we just round that to about twelve. So, we'll spend not more than twelve thousand dollars, cause some of this is still falling in place to, um, to do this.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Uh, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Willis.
Um, what, how much are the signs?
Councilmember Willis?
Yeah, I'm talking to the city manager, cause she said she talked to Vasswell about it. You said you didn't know when I asked you earlier.
Yeah, but Madam City Manager was not in the call with us today.
All right, all right, Councilman Sebastian. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask, she did direct her question to the city manager. Go ahead.
Uh, from my, from my understanding, they were about two hundred dollars apiece. And I believe they got five last time for the Westlake.
And so, are we gonna put one, are we gonna fixate it above the current postage of the signage for the Westlake? Cause right now, we have, I think, Heisman Trophy winner, we have the Westlake champions. And are we gonna put Langston Hughes above that or on the same poll?
Yes, that's the recommendation, uh, that I have here. Actually, it's four at two hundred dollars apiece, uh, for a total of eight hundred dollars. And that's just for the fabricated street signs. That doesn't include, um, they have another recommendation for, um, banners, digital billboards. And the banners are five, is that five hundred dollars apiece or five hundred dollars total? Five hundred dollars total. And then the digital billboards, that's four thousand dollars? Okay, all right, for two, for a total of eight thousand dollars.
Okay, so I would say not to exceed twelve thousand dollars.
Yes.
That's my friendly amendment. My friendly amendment is.
That's what, that's what I said.
Yeah.
That's, that was the recommendation.
Okay.
Councilwoman Gums?
We, do we have a recommendation for a funding source yet? Have you guys had a chance to talk to the finance director?
I have a recommendation.
Okay, no, we don't, we don't have a source.
I have a recommendation.
Okay.
So, w- we have pretty much totally defunded the communications department. And in our budget, twenty-twenty, our last budget, we totally funded them. But now, all of the functions have been moved over to public affairs. And we funded both of those, we funded both of those positions. So, can we look to the communications bu- budget that should have a huge surplus of funding to, to, uh, fund this?
I mean, that, that's an option, yes.
The account, uh, Assistant City Manager Dawn Thompson is shaking his head no. Sorry to put you on the spot, but just so we, I don't want this to be an issue after we leave here.
Right, thank you, Mayor.
No, it's twelve thousand dollars.
Okay, so how much did we fund the communications? But we, we funded the communications department based on the fact that they had a full staff. We also funded the public affairs, uh, department. So, what happened to all that money in the communications budget?
Should still be there, right?
Um, when we funded, funded the budget, it, it was right before we passed it. So, a lot of the money, we went through the budget and things that were in the communications needed to shift over to public affairs. So, it, it wasn't that we funded this one at a hundred percent and this one at a hundred percent.
That's what this council voted on. When we voted on the budget, we had a communications department and we had a public affairs department. And both of the departments was funded, cause that's what the mayor, uh, that's, that was his. So, if, if that department was defunded.
Look, can I, can I just, can I offer this, Councilwoman Willis? Um, for this twelve thousand dollars, just to expedite this process, I would like to ask that we trust our city manager and just say twelve thousand dollars at the discretion of the city manager, wherever you get it from. We promise not to have a fit about the twelve thousand dollars in January. Could we do that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I agree, cause our school, I mean, Langston Hughes to serve it.
Mr. Mayor, I'm in the queue.
Councilman Sebastian?
Just for the record, um, I did send an email to the city manager over the weekend asking us to identify a source that this fund, these funds would eventually come from. So, I agree to you a hundred percent. Let our staff to do their job and take care of this for us. It's twelve thousand dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sebastian. Uh, if there's no one else in the queue, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
So, roll call vote to approve this resolution with the addition that the section one, the city manager in consult, consultation with the finance director is directing and authorized to allocate, but not to exceed twelve thousand dollars in funding and/or in-kind services and partnering with Langston Hughes High School.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded?
Yeah, it's been seconded already.
Okay, yeah, please call the vote.
Councilmember Rau?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
A fireworks show like Juneteenth?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian, I mean, Councilmember Pritchett?
Yes.
That was approved unanimously.
Thank you. And with no further items on the agenda, I will entertain a motion, any motion.
I move to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn for executive session?
Second.
It's been properly moved.
For personnel, real estate, and litigation.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Mr. Clerk, uh, is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, Mr. Clerk, please call the vote.
Roll call vote, Councilmember Rau?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams? Councilmember Pritchett?
Absolutely.
We are recess for executive session at ten thirteen PM.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for staying up for late nights in South Fulton.